To order of the Planning Commission, Tuesday, October twenty.
Recording in progress.
Two thousand twenty-two. Okay, uh, take a look at our agenda. First item is roll call.
Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Milich.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman. Your Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Latassa. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa is absent. We do have six, sorry, five of our members present today. For staff, we have Community Development Director Cole, City Attorney Davy. Um, Principal Planner Roevery is not in attendance, I don't think. Um, your Associate Planner Schmidt will be arriving later. Um. Associate Planner Bugger and myself for Scoring Secretary Cleary.
Okay, do you need to give notice now about how to? Tune into the meeting online?
I can do that.
Okay.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a ten-second delay and Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to a ninety-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four toll-free, then enter the webinar ID. If that number doesn't work, there are more listed on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. The webinar ID for this meeting is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room all connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in orders of hand raised. There is a thirty-three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit. And right now, we can accept comments for items not on the agenda. I do see attendees in the meeting, but they are not raising their hand.
Okay.
Would you? And there are no comments from the live audience here.
Okay, alright. And then we have approval of minutes, and then we do have a considerable increase for Avenue. Does anybody want to pull that off the consent agenda for discussion or keep it on and have a motion for? Let's start with the approval of minutes for October eleventh.
Jennifer, do you see any hands raised to pull any of the consent items?
I do not see any hands raised from the audience.
Okay.
Um, once again, to provide comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon.
Okay, approval of minutes. Someone like to make a motion on that?
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let's have roll call.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa is absent, and those minutes are approved as submitted by a vote of five.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Kim, were we?
I'll just give a brief explanation. We hosted a public hearing on this item at the last meeting, and the applicant had misread the agenda. And so they showed up at seven o'clock, even though it was scheduled for four, and this week they're in Europe. So they've asked for this item to basically just be continued to the next meeting on November eighth.
Okay.
And we still do have to accept public comment, but is there anyone in the council chambers that wants to speak on one thirteen spray? No.
Anybody online?
I see no hands raised online.
We need to vote.
You need to vote. Continue it to a date certain for age.
Okay, can I have a motion to continue? Stephanie, please.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa is still absent. This. This is continued to a date certain, and did we announce the date certain?
It's November eighth.
Perfect. Thank you for confirming.
Okay, that takes care of our consent agenda. Moving to public comments, at this time, the public may speak for maximum of three minutes on any subject which is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. And which is not on the agenda. Anybody wishing to speak to the commission in the chambers? Online?
No hands are raised online.
Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item number four. Before we start, first of all, I have to step down on item four because I own property within three hundred feet of this project, so we'll be taking over. And secondly, I wanted to point out that. When we're presentations from staff and we have questions, I noticed that we we do a lot more than just ask questions. So I asked my fellow commissioners to be very concise and stick to questions only. You're gathering information. It's not a time for comment. That comes later after we collect all of our testimony. So I'm going to be readdressing our effort on that and making sure that we stick to questions only. Having said that, I will be leaving the chambers until I'm called. Okay?
So we will ask Vice Chair Milich to take over the meeting.
Told you. Well, the next item on here, listening. We've already had the public comments and there's been no public comments on this. We have a staff presentation on this.
Yes, um, the agenda item is number four to consider eight-twenty-eight Pacific Street an application for H two historic zoning. The applicant owner is Ben Michael Beasley and Sharon Shannon Highfield. The zoning is R one-six, low-density residential general plan land use designation. And it's exempt from Seca Sequa per Article nineteen, section fifteen-three-oh-five. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matthew Bugger, an associate planner with the city, to provide a presentation.
I'll pull up the presentation. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Buggert. As Kim noted, I'm an associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. They're talking to you about eight-twenty-eight Pacific Street, which has eight, which is seeking H two zoning. At today's Planning Commission hearing, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The recommendation from city staff is that PC adopt a resolution recommending that the city that the city council adopt the ordinance to rezone the property as a city historic resource, changing the zoning from R one-six to R one-six H two. On the thirteenth of October earlier this month, HPC recommended that this hearing body recommend rezoning to city council. The subject property, eight-twenty-eight Pacific Street, is about a five-minute walk from here on Pacific Street between Lamita Street and next to Logan Lane. Some background on this project, an intensive survey was prepared by architectural historian Margaret E. Clovis. And in that intensive survey, the property was identified as a local historic resource based on criteria two and three, which are persons and design. For a little bit more background on that, criterion two, persons, the residence was the family home of one of Monterey's pioneer first Sicilian fishing families here. Specifically associated with John and Agatha Giamona, they owned fishing boats here and were one of the first, yeah, families in Monterey. Uh, criterion three, design, the design applies Spanish Revival architecture to a working-class residence, something that was associated with larger residences. Some very unique components were applied to the smaller working-class home. And ultimately, the property was determined to meet the eligibility requirements for H two overlay zoning. Since it has been identified by a qualified architectural historian to be a significant local historic resource. Uh, the HPC, as I mentioned, further supported this eligibility and has also recommended that the Planning Commission recommend rezoning to city council. So with that, staff's recommendation is that Planning Commission adopt this resolution recommending to city council that an ordinance be adopted to rezone the property as a city historic resource.
Thank you for the presentation, Matthew. Uh, is there anybody from the committee of the Planning Commission who would like to make a comment? We'll start with Commissioner Brassfield. Is there anything?
Actually, a question. Uh, this is a, you said a small house. How many square feet is it?
Thirteen-seventy, one thousand square feet.
Appreciate it. I support the recommendation. Thank you.
Sandy.
I have one question. Is the garage included in the historic status?
The garage on site was not identified as a contributing factor to its historic significance. It was the primary residence itself.
Thank you.
Uh, but it would be a historic property. So any adjustments to the garage would still require some form of historic permit.
Commissioner Dawson, do you have any questions? Alright, real questions from the committee. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? If you'd be good enough, sir, please state your name and.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ben Beasley. I'm one of the owners of the property. It is a fact, it's a five-and-a-half-minute walk. I've done it twice today because I forgot my mask. Um, I'm here for questions. Uh, it's, I think the one thing that was omitted in the presentation was that the builder was also Sicilian immigrant to Martinez Benicia, and he decided to become a builder, not a fisherman. He came down to Monterey nineteen thirty-eight. This is one of the very first homes he built, Albert Sino. He ended up building over thirty thousand homes in the state of California. And his, this was one of his first. So that was of note to the previous commission that listened to this presentation.
I think there's a, there's a street in Old Town named Sino.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think he did a lot of boats, too.
He did, he did quite a bit, and I know, uh, Jack Russo, where there's quite a few locals that worked for Albert Sino over the years. So he's, he made his mark in addition to the Giamona family.
Any of the committee members have questions with the applicant? Mike Brassfield, any questions?
No, sir.
Sandy?
No.
Any questions, Mike? No, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, alright, does any member from the public have any comment on?
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four toll-free. Once again, that phone number is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, and it is toll-free. The webinar ID for this meeting is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. To provide comments, if you are in Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or if you are joined by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute. And.
We'll wait a little bit, see if there are any.
Okay, currently, there are no hands raised.
We'll wait thirty seconds.
No hands are going up.
I will close public comments, bring it back to the commission. Are there any comments? Sandy, we'll start with you.
Um, fully support the application for historic status for the property. And it's wonderful to have the working-class cottage as part of the historic resource that we have. I think the last one we had was on Figaro and Pearl, which were the Japanese fishermen. And, uh, but as the owner of an historic residence where the garage was not part of the historic property, this gives you a lot of leeway if you decide to embellish the garage. Uh, we got wonderful help from the city in reminding us that the garage has to stay as far away from the house as possible so that it isn't included in the historic structure. But, uh, this is, this is a wonderful application, and I support it completely.
Michael Boshin? Uh, yes, I, I, I have a historic home as well, and, uh, and I know that, uh, that, uh, that the, uh, the owner of this house is taking wonderful care of it. And I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with the H three, H two historic zoning. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brassfield?
I already made my comment. I do support the project.
Uh, if there are no other commissioners, there are motion? Why hear a motion? Hear a motion? I moved, I moved to consider eight-two-eight Pacific Street application for H two historic zoning, TM twenty-two dash oh-one-nine-oh.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Dawson, second by Commissioner Brassfield. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a roll call vote from the center.
Definitely, and I just want to make one clarification. Uh, the movement was to consider um, the item, which that was the title, so you didn't need to vote just to consider. Are you voting to approve it?
We're thinking that's. Voting to approve.
Approve the historic.
Good, thank you.
Definitely, I want it clear for the record. And then, um, Commissioner Brassfield, since you are the second, or can you just confirm that you agreed to those terms?
Certainly.
Thank you. And for the vote, Chair Fletcher.
Yeah, I've seen him.
You're right, thank you. Um, Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa is absent. So this motion carries with a vote of four. And it is appealable, um, within ten days to the city council.
Alright, somebody please go get Commissioner, she just, Fletcher, she just, come back in.
Right, yeah, I do think that's where Kim went.
Oh, okay, good. You know, that's about a garage.
Yeah, he told me where he was.
You know, garages in those days, a lot of them didn't even have any garages because they didn't have cars. And if they did have a car, it was a one-car garage. And it was a narrow one because it was a Model T. Right, exactly.
Outside the council chambers.
Maybe he's gossiping with the clerk.
Maybe he's in his car on his mobile phone.
Sorry, it'll just be a moment while we call Chair Fletcher to return.
When we looked at Commissioner Barlow's house, the, he, his house is so historic, there's no driveway, there's no garage. It's just the house on the property. Yeah.
Well, my house that I live in was built in nineteen thirty.
Yeah.
They added the, uh, carport garage in fifteen fifty-four.
Uh-huh.
So there was no garage built in that house when it was built. It was a guest house.
Yeah.
There was no garage. Is Brassfield hiding over here?
I'm making notes, thank you.
He's showing us something.
I'm sorry for the delay. It'll be just a moment.
Yeah, no place to go and no time to be there. Yeah, really.
I'll be here all night.
That's dedication.
You'll be here with me. Or, or online. Well, why don't we go ahead and continue with the hearing since we can't seem to get in touch with Commissioner Fletcher?
Okay, but he won't be able to vote if he's not here.
That's correct, but we've, I've gone outside. We've walked all around the building. The phone number he gave us is not working for some reason, so.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and try to contact him, but I think we, we have a quorum and we can go ahead with the public hearing.
Okay, item number five. Consider adopting the supplemental mitigated negative declaration for the green belt fuel reduction project. Old Capital Site, the applicant was the city of Monterey, open space zoning district parks and open space general plan designation.
There is a staff presentation as well.
Staff report.
Yes, there's a staff presentation as well. Which I can get fired up.
Do we open this to public comment first? No.
No.
No. Staff report. Okay, the staff report first. Staff has disappeared, too. We're on our own, man. We have all the power. Such as it is.
Alright. Uh, yeah, the Green Belt Fuel Reduction Plan, Old Capital Site. This is a Sequa ISMND project, again, for Planning Commission, October twenty-fifth, twenty-two. My name is Matthew Buggert, and I am a planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. The recommendation from city staff is that Planning Commission adopts the resolution to adopt the supplemental MND for the Green Belt Fuel Reduction Plan, Old Capital Site. The location of the Old Capital Site is the purple, uh, the three purple parcels pointed that in this map. You'll note that there are seven other areas on this map in various colors, yellow, blue, pink, purple. And these are areas that already fall within the plan area and that this is a new area being added to that plan area. Some background on the project. The overall objective of this project is to reduce the risk of wildfire in the plan area throughout the city in these greenbelt areas through fuel reduction actions undertaken by the city. Uh, some of these actions include thinning vegetation, removing trees, trimming trees that are near to existing structures, removing exotic and invasive plants, and other actions to reduce fuel. The previous environmental document for this project was adopted in twenty-twenty. At that time, the city had not yet finalized acquisition of these three parcels, considered the Old Capital Site property. The Old Capital Site is one, it's desired by the city to include this property in the Green Belt Fuel Management Area so that we can conduct fuel management here. And the updated ISMND is required to address this expanded area. Uh, there are already environmental, there was already environmental review of the previous seven areas, and this is just trying to add an eighth one to where we're doing some fuel management. The mitigation measures included in this document are identical to those previously required in the initial study. Uh, they address biological resources, soil stability, paleontological resources, hazardous materials, wetlands, and hydrology and water quality. Uh, there's, there's only one change to the mitigation measures, and that was for cultural resources. The mitigation was expanded to address tribal consultation requests. Uh, it's recent outreach that's conducted is under a state law, AB fifty-two, in which local tribes need to be consulted with from the city. with from the city. And something that's becoming more common is that they are requesting access during these ground disturbing activities, whether it be new foundation for a structure or like what we're doing here with some trimming and vegetation removal that they be allowed onsite to act as a monitor. The ISMND was noticed for the required thirty day public review period. It, the notice included a summary of the project and updated information, how they can attend here when it was anticipated for hearing. And during that period, we did not receive any public comments or emails. However, just recently, we received one phone call, leave yesterday. Regarding two spelling errors in the ISMND and then noting that there is a green belt that was not included in the plan area and should have been. However, that parcel and greenbelt area is not actually owned by the city. So the fuel reduction management activities can't be done there. Yeah. Ultimately, the recommendation from city staff for this environmental document is that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you for your input.
Before we get started with this public hearing, I just, for the record, Chair Fletcher joined us a few minutes late. So he will not be participating in this discussion or vote. And Vice Chair Milich will be chairing this one item. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Questions for the Commissioner Dawson?
I, I noticed that, that, that we're, we're including the tribes in, in any, any soil disturbance. My question is, do we pay them for the privilege of having them oversee?
So one thing that I can do for the, for this is show the exact language that was included to the mitigation measure. It might add some clarity. Through the AB fifty-two process and consultation, there's typically back and forth between city staff or the environmental consultant with the tribal, the tribe member and either coming to an understanding or soliciting input on them on a suggested mitigation measure. And then this is the resulting language that came from that consultation process. I can share that.
So the answer is for this project, no. Okay, that we can bring up the specific language.
And that language is included here. The added language is, as requested by the Esalen Tribe, through AB fifty-two consultation, an Esalen Tribe Cultural Monitor will be notified two weeks in advance of any project-related activities in drainage areas and one thousand feet from drainage areas. The monitor can be present for all project activities in these areas. And appropriate safety protocols shall be adhered to by all people onsite during the project or site access may be revoked.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions, Michael?
I have a question. I'm quite familiar that over the years, NCIP has been the major funding source for this activity. Now we've increased it by three additional parcels. Has any identif, been any other source of doing this work been identified to pay for that work?
So our forestry department works on their budget and on, on an annual basis. And I know in the past, the NCIP has been very generous with their money towards maintenance of our greenbelt areas. So I don't have an answer for you regarding the funding of the actual maintenance. That would be part of the city's budgetary process and NCIP process each year. What I, what we're trying to do or what our role is, is to prepare the environmental document. So when our forestry department is ready to conduct the greenbelt maintenance, all the environmental protocols have been identified.
Thank you, Kim. I, I really do appreciate that. And then this is a well worth funding project. It's just that we are identifying additional expenditures requirements. And I'm just hoping that we can look at some grants or something to help the city in this endeavor. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brassfield?
Nope, good.
Commissioner Freeman?
I have one question. Just to clarify, there were, there was a mitigated negative declaration for the property that included a lot of other things. This is just one additional, right? The greenbelt fuel reduction?
Yes. So the fuel reduction plan and, and identified environmental concerns had already been conducted in twenty twenty for those seven other greenbelt areas. And since the city hadn't yet acquired it, it couldn't be included in that environmental review. But since the city has acquired the property, it needed its own environmental review specific to these parcels so that it can also be included in the fuel reduction plan.
Thank you.
So that's, yeah, that's the supplemental.
Question for staff. Commissioner Fletcher, can he can, he can participate? He just can't vote? No? Can't ask question?
Correct, because he was not here for the whole hearing.
Okay. I have an additional question.
Yes, okay.
I was, I was, as my first read through, I, I wondered why Iris Canyon Green Belt wasn't included. And it looks like it's got chucked into the Don Davi Park Green Belt. And so they're, they're, they're different, but, but I guess if the city wants to call them the same thing, that's, that's okey dokey.
For yeah, for the other seven items that was done under the previous environmental document. And so this one primarily focused on those three old capital site.
Right.
Properties.
Yeah, I, I knew that. But you know, when I was reading through, you know, I live very near the, the Irish Canyon Green Belt. And I was wondering why it wasn't mentioned, but, but there you go.
So I think Iris Canyon is included in the original environmental document, wasn't it? It was five C. So it was included in the original environmental document.
At the end of questions by the commissioner? Okay, well, let's hug. Can we open it to public comment? Jennifer?
We should take the applicant first if they are, oh wait, there's not an applicant for this. I'm sorry.
There's no.
Habit. We do have some hands raised. I do believe first I saw a phone number with the last three digits two oh four. And before I give you permission, I'll announce for everyone to provide a public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And that first phone number will be the commenter with their last three digits two zero four. You should be able to unmute by pressing star six.
Yes. Good afternoon. Tom Rowley calling from Fisherman's Flats neighborhood. I was the one that called in and I just happened to read the agenda and look at the, the previous report from twenty twenty. And I can tell you, this was a high priority item with the NIP committee, recognizing that cleanup really needed to be done in this area. And I can tell you that it's very, very much supported. And thank you, Kim, for attending the government affairs meeting yesterday of the chamber. Your participation was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And there is another commenter with the last three digits of nine zero two. And I do need to put on the timer as well. And there is a commenter nine oh two. Please state your name for the record once you unmute, if you feel comfortable doing so.
Hi, this is Nina Beatty. I have not had the, the good fortune to be able to read through this mitigated negative deck. However, I'm, I'm very concerned about when I see the word fuel reduction, because it seems to be a wholesale taking of habitat. There's, there are two different ways of looking at our forest. And I live in the forest, so I'm very cognizant of fire danger and reducing fire risks. I also see languaging that, that criminalizes basically habitat. We have a forest that is stressed, extremely stressed. Being in an urban environment helps it be stressed, but also with all the changes climatically, it's also even more stressed. And we have diminishing wildlife as a result of that forest, those forest impacts. When we talk about habitat and tree removal, I am not, I'm very concerned that there's not going to be a judicious or careful doing of this. I, we've had over two hundred and twenty trees removed to date by the city. And I had nine healthy trees removed by the, either taken by the city or permitted by the city, healthy trees removed around my home. So there's a trust issue I have, and I think residents should have, is what exactly is going on? These are established ecosystems and established habitats. When goats come in, they impact the soil terribly. They compact the soil, and they also strip the ground of everything. When you strip out vegetation, then you have, in addition to destroying your habitat, you have resilient species that will move in repeatedly to populate the land. And there's no benefits discussion as far as the food and shelter that these resilient species provide to the environment. I can tell you that deer use the Janista for food and they use it for shelter. Plants travel and I, this discussion of non-native plants is ridiculous. Who of us in the room is a native person to this region? We're not. And this, this demonizing of plants and trees that provide water, provide, that provide oxygen, trees in particular, that when you take out vegetation, you reduce the level of moisture in an area. And you dry out the soil, you dry out the plants, and you create more fire danger. The, when you quote unquote thin trees, you create light that comes in and also creates, it damages these ecosystems and creates more fire danger. And through ion exchange, trees promote rainfall. You take down trees, you're not only taking away oxygen and sequestration of carbon, but you're also diminishing your rainfall in an area. So I ask you to very, very carefully look again at this and make sure that these, this is dead vegetation, that living vegetation is not being disturbed, that these valuable habitats that these poor creatures are, are left with. I, when I see the deer wandering our streets, the few that are left in our streets, that, that they have no trees, they have no habitat to, to, to hide in, to, to hide their young in. I've seen deer hiding behind a single tiny strip of Janista just to, I mean, do we want to live in glass houses where all our neighbors can see us doing all our functions? I don't think so. And we are neglecting our wild habitat terribly. So I ask you to look at this again carefully. I would like to have the time to look at this negative declaration because I know their impact on the environment.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your comment. That was our last commenter.
Close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Sandy Freeman?
I don't have a comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Fletcher? Bill Coman?
I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in this. The, the park, the park as it, as it will be is, is going to be a real plum for the, for the city. And so I'm, I'm really, really sure that, that we need, we need the, the fuel cleanup because there's lots of, lots of houses just uphill from the park. And the fire, if any, will go right that way. So we need to, we need to get the fuel cleanup. And please, please take, take the poison ivy, the poison oak, because that's bad, bad, bad. But I am in favor of this.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Thank you. My earlier question was generated by a conversation with one of my neighbors. And the topic was generally the drought. And what can we do to improve our capabilities in our green areas? And so the, the question generated, who's going to pay for this? But one of the things that came up in the conversation is that around the world and in the United States, particularly in this state, we're trying to address how can we retain water in our grasslands and so forth? One of the tools that's been used, not just here, but in other countries as well, is taking a swale and digging a trench on the high side so that the water could percolate into that ditch and then down into the ground. And they're having some remarkable results based on that kind of research. Well, in this particular case, we're not going to be trenching. But I don't know why we couldn't take some of the material and make something to slow down the water. Every time I've been back in the forest and typically it just washes away, but I think that we need to rethink how we can improve our greenlands. And it used to be, and Mike talked about Iris Canyon. We used to have NIP say that we can't use logs. But then next thing we saw, there's an Iris Canyon, they had all kinds of logs. Well, I say use some of those logs to make an impediment to water just running off the hillside. A ten foot, twelve foot length, something like that. Particularly if taking some loose debris can make a, something to slow down that water. I, I just think that we need to pay attention to this and, and look at them very carefully to improve what capabilities we can generate. Thank you for my comment.
Are there any other comments by the commission? We'll bring it, well, I'd entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one.
All right. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting a supplemental mitigated negative declaration for the Green Belt Fuel Reduction Project at the Old Capital Site.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dawson. Motion by Commissioner Freeman. Are there any other comments before we call for a vote? Call for a vote, call a vote, please.
Chair Fletcher? I'm staying, Vice Chair Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Brassfield?
And yes, I do support this.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa is still absent. And this motion carries with a vote of four.
Excellent. You're on, Dan.
Okay, that takes us to our last item on this afternoon's agenda, item number six, which is consider three five zero Cali Principale Use Permit Amendment PA two two zero one three five to allow modifications to an existing DISH wireless the personal wireless service facility. The applicant is Adam Erlich, JFI Infrastructure Partners. DISH and the owner San Carlos Associates California Partnership. This is visitor serving or visitor accommodation facility zoning district commercial general plan land use designation. It is exempt from Sequa per Article nineteen, section one five three zero three, class three. We have staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jerry Hiddleman. I'm contract planner with the city, helping with wireless permits. Let me share my screen. I have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Great. Thank you. This is actually a contin- continuation of these, this project from the September thirteenth planning commission hearing, but I'll go through the project description again to bring you back up to speed on what the project is and where it's located and so forth. So this is a wireless project uh on a three fifty Cali Principale Marriott Hotel. And as you can see, it's bounded by Pacific Street on the west, Franklin Street on the south and um Cali Principale on the east side. And you'll see the antennas are located in this part of the building. So this project is removal of six existing panel antennas, installation of six new ones in the same location. Uh, and then the removal of some support equipment, uh, remote radio units and replacement of those and installation of some voltage protect, protectors and uh, they're taking out two cabinets on the roof and replacing it with one new support equipment cabinet and uh, that's the support equipment. This will be an upgrade of the facility from a four G to a five G facility. So stated, the ownership is San Carlos Associates California Partnership, applicant Adam Ehrlich. Uh, the wireless carrier is Dish Wireless in this case. And the zoning for this property is visitor accommodation facility and it's in the general commercial uh designated area under the general plan. Now, project review process, this is called an eligible facilities request under section sixty-four oh nine of Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of twenty twelve. That's a federal regulation. So it's not a substantial change per the Federal Communication Commission uh definition. We're under a sixty-day shot clock, so that would end actually now. It's been moved out because of the continuation to uh November first of this year. And again, the project was continued at September thirteenth meeting and then again at the September twenty-seventh meeting till this date tonight. And that's, that was to address uh, some of you may recall inconsistencies in the project plans and elevations. And you'll see that most of those have been addressed. Just to go over the site plan, again, you could see Pacific, uh, West Franklin Street, Cali Principale. Uh, they're kind of small, but there's two antennas on the building facade, upper building side here, here facing West Franklin and then two antennas facing Pacific Street. Those will be replaced with some support equipment up in this area on the roof. Here's just an existing layout of those antennas. They're attached to the facade of the building in three directions or three sectors. And they will be replaced in exactly their same location. The new antennas will be the same uh length, but they'll be a little bit, little bit wider. That's the only difference as you can see. So here's the east elevation. These are the antennas facing Cali Principale up on the roof in this location. And you can see the other ones facing West Franklin Street right over there. So this is existing and proposed. See a little difference in the antennas and the support equipments up on the roof that'll basically look the same under the proposed condition, same location. Uh, this is south elevation from West Franklin Street. Uh, as you could see previously, these decks were not clearly shown or the articulation on the building. Now they are shown. Here are the two antennas facing West Franklin. This is how they would be replaced. And you can see right over there, there's the other ones uh facing Pacific Street. So we did have these elevations fixed. Same thing with the elevation facing Pacific Street. Uh, later on, I did find a slight error in the plans. The actual deck underneath or below where the antennas are is actually a little bit lower than shown right there. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it is a little bit lower than shown on these elevations. But the interesting thing is that the uh elevations on the plans are correct. Proceded center of the antenna is at ninety-six feet and the top of the balcony is at seventy-one feet, six inches. And that's consistent for all three of these antenna facilities. They're all the same distance from the deck below or any area where um guests or the public can be present. We do have a photo simulation showing this, first of all, West Franklin Street looking northwest at the east building elevation. So it's a little bit small, but that's existing, that's proposed. And you can see that these are not near any deck areas. Uh, this is a view uh Cali Principale looking north at the east and south building elevations. So this is the south building elevation right here. It's a little hard to see, but here's the antennas. It's nothing directly below, but there is a deck at this location right there. And again, nothing, uh, no decks or balconies below the antennas on the east side of the building. Uh, moving over to West Franklin Street looking northeast and this is the west elevation of the building and south, uh, a little bit of the south building elevation. So here is the antennas to be replaced. This is just a roof area over here. But if you go down below, as I showed you before, this is the deck area. So the deck area is again about twenty-two feet, twenty-three feet below where the antennas are located. Had, uh, of course, a radio frequency study and the results are that the new antennas meet all FCC public and occupational requirement limits. Uh, there's no public access to the roof or building facade where the antennas and support equipment are located currently and will be located after the replacement. Uh, there will be RF warning signage and barriers required to protect workers accessing the rooftop. And that sign is already there, but that will be double checked for, to make sure it's there with this replacement as well. Moving on to the wireless study, uh, this, these are the antennas facing Cali Principale. And you can see that the uh RF or EME array uh goes away from the building and would not affect any of the deck areas or the windows over here. Eleven point five five percent, that's eleven point five five percent of the FCC limit is outside of the window. It won't be inside the room. So that would be for uh, let's say someone who is cleaning windows on the outside of the building. Uh, here are the wireless antennas facing West Franklin Street. You can see that they go get over this part of the building and we made sure that this deck and this window with area would not be effective. So it is again way below the FCC limit. And this shows again the three arrays coming off the different parts of the building in these various locations. Uh, moving over to um the east elevation view of the building, uh, here are the antennas and the yellow is the occupational limit area. Blue shows the public limit of the FCC uh regulations and the RF exposure level from all carriers at the balcony level, which is down here about sixteen feet below the um area where the limit is exceeded would be at the deck area four point four one percent of the FCC limit. And we wanted to make sure that this was safe, so we had them do the limit at a six-foot height with which would be a typical height of a person standing on the deck and that is nine point seven three percent of the FCC limit. So again, uh, at least sixteen feet of difference between the bottom of the deck and uh where the RF radio frequency delay uh, um, array is located. This is looking at the south elevation. And again, you can see that um we'd have be way below the limit at this deck area over here and also at this deck area on the other side of the building heading more towards Pacific Street. So same exact situation. The antennas are again sixteen, more than sixteen feet above the deck. And that's where the public limit is and the occupational limit way below the FCC limits. Now, in looking at the west elevation, we did find that um there were some inconsistencies in the drawings in the EME report uh that were somewhat carried over from the project plans. The deck area is actually a little bit lower over here. But again, the same limits and they did not show the um location of some of these windows correctly. Actually, these windows and including these two are not there. First windows are over in this location. So just a slight modification will be needed on these plans. Now, because there was a discrepancy again in these plans, we are recommending that a a new project script, uh, condition be added that prior to the issuance of building permits, the project plans and RF report elevations be revised to accurately show the number of floors, windows and deck area on the existing building at three fifty Cali Principale, uh, just as I showed you. And we are confident that that won't affect the RF um results, but we want to make sure that the plans on record uh are correct, that building permit stage. So we do have some RF conditions as well, as well. Post-installation RF report is required to make sure that what you see tonight is accurately portrayed. The RF warning signs are required for all workers accessing the roof area and the antenna installation area on the roof shall be restricted and secure. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit uh twenty-two zero one three five to allow the modifications to an existing Dish Wireless Facility at three fifty Cali Principale with the added condition of approval that the plant, whoops, that the plans be modified prior to the issuance of building permits. And we'll check them to make sure they're, they're correct. Uh, with that, I available for questions and answers. I know applicant does have their RF engineer in attendance and their engineer who drew the plans and tends as well. If you have more technical questions for them, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will have uh questions, yes?
Question, um, yeah, it is the signage uh on the, on the protecting the rooftop. Is that in Spanish and English?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I can tell you it's in English. I can't guarantee it's in Spanish though. Maybe the applicant.
The, the, the uh, the plan that we got.
Yeah, but I could check on that and get, get back to you or maybe the applicant can elaborate on that, but I, I I, I don't know.
Um, hold on, maybe I can get it here.
Yeah. I'll check, I'll check the RF report and see if that, what it says.
Okay, other questions?
I have questions.
Okay.
Jerry, what the which balcony illustration shows the chairs?
Um, which one would show, I'm sorry, chairs?
Uh, uh, yeah, I think this is the one. Well, it, it's another one, but these are shows the decks with chairs, correct?
Cheers.
You mean the decks that are deep enough to have a chair?
Correct.
Yeah.
It was one of the illustrations in the package that showed chairs. I'm trying to identify where those chairs are in relationship to the transmitter.
Oh, maybe this one showed it.
Balcony.
I see the windows. I'm not sure if those are chairs though. Is this potentially the one you're thinking of?
No, it's actually, it's a closer up and it just shows chairs off to the left. Uh, and that's why I'm trying to identify where they are in relationship to the transmitter.
The
And the reason is because you said that there's disparity in the, in the distance between it. You, because one of them, it shows six feet above the balcony uh level simulation at seventy-seven point five feet AGL. And you're saying that it's probably seventy-one point five?
That is at the, yeah, that is at the deck level. And we also had them look at, uh, if a person was standing on the deck. What, what would be the uh, uh, amount of RF?
That's why I was asking for that illustration showing the chairs because if those transmitters are above that portion of the building that doesn't have chairs, I'm trying to understand the distance between those transmitters and those chairs.
I'll, I'll have to look for those, those chairs. I'm not aware of the chair being shown.
Yeah, you, it's in one of the illustrations that was in the package.
Oh, in the package, okay.
Well, if we don't know where the shared chairs are, maybe we could help Commissioner Bradfield by showing where the chairs could be and what deck.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm looking at what distance. Well, if you have a deck, a chair would fit on the deck, you can get a rough idea of the distance.
Yeah, that's, this is all the deck, this is the deck level over here that's closest to these antennas.
Right, and then right, right below that is uh our balconies with the awnings above them.
Yes.
Balconies really aren't deep enough, I don't think, for a chair to be put out there. There, it's more of a Juliet balcony.
I see. But these ones are, are deep enough. So you could have a chair here or someone standing on the deck and that's, that's what we were concerned about.
And yet, and that's exactly where I'm going. From the illustration, it showed that the, those with chairs was offset to the left. But I don't, I couldn't tell. There's no scale to identify how far. Um, and so my concern is still, you know, it, if these are directional antennas and it's broadcasting that yellow cone, what's the distance to where the chairs are?
Um, that would, that would be sixteen feet minimum there and then an extra um about I would say six feet to here, which would be twenty-two feet to the bottom of the antenna. So, right there.
Just to summarize, the, the occupational and public exposure areas where you don't want people, which is in the blue and yellow zones, are substantially above the deck areas.
Right.
That's why I was asking for it, some range of feet, so we could tell. It's just, it doesn't show.
Well, there, there is sixteen and then.
So about twenty-two to the yellow.
Yes.
There's a little note, a little note says balcony at seventy-one five.
Yeah, yeah, seventy-one five, that's why I'm saying that. So, anyway, that was my question. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Yeah. Any further questions? Okay, then we will open it up for public comment.
Jerry, can you go ahead and um stop sharing your screen so we can see the commissioners on? Thank you very much.
Jennifer, do we have anybody?
I do believe the applicant is on the line. Adam Erlich. Um, if you would like to speak for your portion, please raise your hand. Or also there is someone else, Jeff Jether. And Adam Erlich's hand just went up, so I will ask you to unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, well, after you said, after I put my hand up, I heard Jeff had put his hand up, so let me defer to Jeff.
Um, Jeff's hand is not up, but he is here.
Said his hand was up, okay. Uh, I just will, I'll, then I'll just say, uh, yep, Jerry, uh, gave a great presentation. I'm here if there's any questions. I also, like Jerry said, there is our, our RF engineer consultant. He's available for any questions. His name is David Witowski. Um, and, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
All right, and I do see David Witowski in the meeting as well. So if David or Jeff would like to, um, speak, or I guess if any of the commission has any questions for either of them. Cause their hands are not raised. I don't, I don't know that they have any presentation or anything.
Questions from commissioners to the applicant, yes?
Uh, I do have a question. Um, is this, is the safety signage in multiple languages?
And I don't see him on the screen. Oh, there he is.
Okay, hello. Uh, yes, I'm looking at the RF report and I see that the, it appears as though the signs are only in English.
Adam, I have a question. Is there any requirement for it to be in Spanish and English? Or where are we with that?
Um, I don't, I believe that only requirement is, is there in English, certain font size, certain colors, and we have different types of signs. Um, all in, you know, very bold notice caution and warning signs.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
There are no hands raised, so just in case one of the applicants on the line does want to speak, I'll give them one more chance. There's a raise your hand button in Zoom, if you're joined by computer. And I do, oh, um, Adam raised his hand, but he already still has permission to speak.
I'm still on?
Yes.
Okay, I, I've, I've been told that there are dual signs available. And if the commission would like them, we can put, uh, both English and Spanish.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, shall we bring it back to commissioners for discussion?
Somebody else has a hand up?
Sorry, I was typing. I do not see any hands raised from the public, so let me just adjust a few things. And, um, for those of us at home, you can join the meeting from a computer or phone by using the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertechmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four. Then enter the webinar ID one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. To provide a public comment by Zoom, please re, use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And to write comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called up. And I see no hands raised, so I don't think there's.
And we will close the public testimony and bring it back to commissioners for discussion.
Yes, I, I would humbly ask that, uh, that the, the safety signs be in, be in Spanish and English. Um, I think it's, yeah. It's, uh, it's kind of for safety sake that, that I asked that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yep.
If I could raise my hand on that, that point, um, I think we need to defer whatever the OSHA rules require and not, um, try to invent our own rules in that regard and our conditions of a permit that require compliance with all laws should cover that. Um, if it is in fact an obligation.
We can recommend it.
Okay, you make a very good point. Any other discussion?
Well, I think the whole point of bringing it back today um, was that the initial recommendation was that the planning commission adopt this resolution subject to stated findings and conditions of approval. And the main condition of approval last time that brought it back today was that the plan should be modified to accurately show windows, decks and elevations because the drawing on the prior was so poor. And so that has already been added into today's discussion. And, uh, I don't know whether we should recommend, uh, dual language safety signs or just go with, as Christine Davy said, the existing OSHA, uh, requirements. But it seems that they have come back with better elevations and drawings. But now we're adding that into the resolution that prior to getting the building permit, they have to make them even better.
I agree. I think, um, on the signage, I, I think it's a good idea to have two languages. But I also think we should defer to the city attorney's advice on that. Mike Brassfield, do you have anything?
Just that if it, the applicant wants to volunteer to do it, that I don't see why we should stop it.
Nothing from Stephen?
Yeah, Stephen. Okay, then can I entertain a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit UP twenty-two, zero, one, three, five to allow modifications to an existing dish personal wireless service facility at three fifty Kai principal subject to stated findings and conditions of approval. And that condition of approval mentioned today is that prior to issuing a building permit, the plans will be modified to accurately show windows, decks and elevations.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I have a second? Commissioner Dawson, there's a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milic.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa is absent. So this motion carries with a vote of five and it is appealable um, within three, three days with forms found at the planning office.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our afternoon session. See you at seven.
Thanks, Chair.
Welcome everybody to the evening session of the planning commission. Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. We're going to start off with a roll call.
Definitely, and let me just record.
Recording in progress.
For our role.
Hey, Mike.
We have Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Millet.
Sure.
Frisher Freeman.
Here.
Frisher Brassfield.
Present.
Your Dawson.
Turn your mic, Mike.
Commissioner Dawson, can you confirm if you're present? Can you hear me?
Turn on your.
He's 17.
He doesn't know.
Commissioner Dawson, can you hear us? I don't think he can.
Um, I've got an idea.
Glad I heard his voice.
Yeah, you should.
Uh-oh. So you can put it in front of my webcam.
I don't have to. Share it.
Oh. His speakers.
They need to share it. Can you see it?
He needs his speakers, not his microphone. He can't hear us. This is the first. Thank you all for bearing with us.
Coming back to hand script.
I. Labeled because.
There we are.
It heard public comment.
No, he's on.
Mike, can you hear us? Mike Dawson, can you hear us?
Mike Brassfield, do you have Mike's number?
Yes.
Could you text him?
I will do that right now.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
I'm looking, I'm looking right at it and I'm not muted.
Okay.
I don't know how. That can get changed.
Mike, here us, he needs.
Yes, speakers.
Film on his computer.
I'm going to unmute myself.
Mike Brassfield, can you ask him to turn on his speakers? It's not his microphone. Yours.
Well, I just saw his face on my screen here.
Still here.
Can you turn on your speaker?
Where are my speakers?
What are they?
Volume button on his keyboard, or there's usually a little speaker icon in the bottom right-hand corner of the computer.
Okay, I'll work on it. Okay, I'll work on it. The mute is not on.
Mike Dawson, can you hear us? Because I don't think there are sounds coming out of Mike Dawson's speakers. Here. Oh, it's.
There's unmute.
There's a new feature on Zoom, we were just told. And he'll have to go into the settings and allow.
Still nothing.
Speakers. We're not hearing him. I mean, he's not hearing us.
Is on his phone?
This is Gail Carish. Sometimes you just have to restart your computer. We're all IT, we're all in our IT departments now. But sometimes you just have to restart your computer and it fixes the issue.
Mike, they suggest that you turn off your computer and turn it back on reboot. He's trying it.
You mean, use your phone for the time being? Yeah. Let me send him a message.
End script again. It looks like he was talking to a. With me to a phone. So from this. You got something coming in, Mike?
The people say, use your phone for the time being. And the two pieces of advice are. Turn your computer off and restart it to get it going again. But the gentle. Yeah, and the gentleman in the audience said that Zoom has changed their graphical user interface. So that the mute thing is on the left-hand side in the upper-left-hand corner. But you could use your phone just for time being. Everybody has a suggestion here, Mike.
Yeah, God bless them. Right. Okay, that's the end of mine.
Okay, I'm going for planning administrator. Click here to join. We take a break for technical difficulties. Okay. Here I am. Join with video.
There he is.
Speaker. How's that sound?
Good, we can hear you.
Can you hear us? We can hear you.
How's that sound?
It sounds good, Mike. Can you hear me? This is Kim.
Am I really?
We can hear him, Mike. He can't hear us, and that is a problem. So there's, there's a speaker icon. It looks sort of like a megaphone, a small one with probably an X through it.
I'm unmuted.
Yeah, it's not the mute button. It's the speaker button.
Embarrassing. This can unmute me.
And another idea is if you click on the mute. Like where you would turn your speaker on or off. If you hit that arrow, you can switch to phone audio. That a computer and then just call in.
Link like we did meet for the last meeting of going to the minutes. I'm sorry, for like the agenda. And go on that way.
I just did that. Watch me. Boy, I hate to, I hate to miss all this good talk.
He's.
He's got two phones.
Jennifer, you ready to bring him in? Wrong. Attachment. In the agenda.
I think he's been.
Hi, Mike. Hi, in the bottom right.
It says join audio and there's an arrow.
There's Jennifer. Mine's on the.
Hi, Mike.
Yeah. You got an email today from Alicia Salas that Zoom is updating. We have to update our links if we want to use. That is a mystery here in New York today. Maybe Mike is using it. An outdated link for Zoom. I can give him the. I can give him the.
At the very bottom.
Link.
Right, bottom left.
Well.
Go down to the bottom right. You see a little bluey square icon with a white. It's time when you hit the bottom. But already I see that. Cover of the page. And then I spoke and no one had just started.
That's a great suggestion, Jennifer.
Okay. We. I think you can call in. You can leave on there. You can watch. But not the warranty that I have on power. And then you call. Um, I'm. You only need to.
As I am muted and I just.
Need to find your settings that. Yeah, I'm here. I'm working on that. But if you go to your audio settings.
Your speaker is not working. Your speaker is not working. Please check. Your connection to use our different speaker. Ah, you bastard.
Yeah, so. So you want to go to the screen settings. Do you see a more now? A more option? You should have now.
We'll try a pair of earbuds.
I don't.
Rid of unmute. And up here, I have the host can unmute me. The host can unmute me in the meeting. How's, how's that?
So that.
Then I'll have to you with your microphone. We're looking for your speaker setting.
Okay. There's a more. Participate. No invite. Share white, share invite link, raise hand. No, no.
What about, so on the very far left, there should be something that says audio.
There's something. There's forty.
Yeah, try clicking on that.
Oh, let me get this.
I think we should just do old school, have them call in. Listen.
Yeah, I go to audio settings and then change your speaker. You just found it. Audio setting. So there's like a microphone. It says mute or unmute. And then it like click on that arrow, go to the audio settings. And then at the very top under, I mean, sorry, on the left, it should be highlighted audio with a little. Headbone.
Hey, Jennifer. Can you ask him if he would be willing to come in? And we'll postpone for ten minutes.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me? You can. Through the phone or through the speaker? On your computer? Okay, I think we fixed it.
Could you have him unmute?
Have him unmute. Oh, hello, everyone.
All right, you're there. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so what we're gonna do. Is we're gonna start again with roll call, please.
Yes. Chair Fletcher.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Millet. Nope.
Here.
We lost.
Fell asleep again.
Here. Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Latessa is still absent. For staff, we have Community Development Director Cole, City Attorney Davi. Senior Associate Planner Schmidt. And myself, Recording Secretary Cleary. And I will take this opportunity to announce to the public how we can join. To participate and provide public comment. Via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone. Making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. Join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone. Use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isarchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Again, phone number to call is 833-568-8864. It is toll-free. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. The commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go into another room while connected. As background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. And. We do have attendees online. I don't see any hands raised.
Well, I'd like to announce continued public comments. At this time, the public may speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject which is within the jurisdiction of the Monterey Planning Commission. And which is not on the agenda. So we'll start in the council chambers. Is there anybody wanting to speak to the commission? Online, Jennifer, do we have anybody?
We do have one hand raise online.
Okay.
Last three phone number digits are 902. You should be able to press star six to unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. This is Nina Beatty. I have three comments to make during this open public comment section. I am disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity and I'm blocked from attending the hearings in person tonight because of the access barrier of Wi-Fi and wireless devices utilized by the city. This violates the Brown Act, which requires that public hearing chambers are accessible to disabled persons. I repeatedly asked for disabled accommodation to rewire internet access and use wired internet connections. As was true previously in the chambers to reduce the EMF exposure, and the city has refused to do so. The city is not in compliance with ADA or the Brown Act. Secondly, last May, the Planning Commission requested information on ADA. Have staff provided it. Commissioner Hanson Reed asked, where does the telecommunications act and ADA cross? Are our hands truly tied? Commissioner Fletcher said, I feel like I don't understand where these laws connect or disconnect. I don't want her, that is me, to think we're blowing her off. No one says anything and there's no explanation to how this all comes together. Commission asked the city attorney to provide information on how the laws intersect. Did that happen? If so, when? Thirdly, there's an enforcement issue that's been going on for months that's not been dealt with. There's a public safety hazard along Pacific Street with utility poles that are leaning and. Threatening to dump cables onto the street or the poles to fall over. This hasn't been addressed. They're likely AT&amp;T, since they installed all the fiber in the neighborhoods and these are, many of these are telephone poles. There's been no penalty and no abatement. So I request that the city look into this and contact whoever is in charge of this to make sure that we don't have a public safety issue of poles falling on cars or starting fires with the collapse of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina Beatty. Anyone else? Okay, that takes us to our first item on this evening's agenda, item number seven, which is consider recommending an ordinance to the city council repealing and replacing city code, chapter 38, article 17, section 112.4, related to wireless communications facilities exempt from SECA. Excuse me, SECA. Article 19, section 15305 and 15308. Article nineteen, section fifteen, three zero five and fifteen through zero eight, class five. And eight, I would like to point out that I was not here for the. September twenty seventh meeting. But Jennifer was kind enough to send me a bunch of links so that I was able to watch the proceedings and catch up. So I will be participating in item number seven this evening, let's start with our staff report.
Um, thank you Chair Fletcher and Commissioners. This evening, I think, represents the thirty day public meeting on wireless in the city of Monterey. We had over thirty subcommittee meetings. And the planning commission, this represents your fifth public hearing on the wireless ordinance. This evening, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the draft ordinance to the city council. Um, with one exception, and that'll be regarding the one hundred foot setback to schools and residences. And I'll discuss that in more detail. At the fourth public hearing, the planning commission had four. Um, items that you directed staff to include in the draft ordinance, they've been included in the draft ordinance and resolution. Um, the first was you had a discussion at your last meeting about mockups. Versus simulations. And the direction was to require photo simulations both from a distance and close up for new facilities, and that's included in the draft that's attached. To your staff report. You were also very interested in creating a setback between facilities. Um, so for example, in the public right of way, if a facility was to be installed. The proposed setback between facilities would be two hundred and fifty feet. And your design. That was to avoid visual clutter, and that's been included in the draft ordinance. Your third direction was to provide a minimum one hundred foot buffer from schools and residences. Excluding situations in which effective prohibition is proven. That is also included in the draft ordinance, but that is the one clause that the city of Monterey staff cannot support. The fourth is, um, you are interested in a standardized pole design. And the draft resolution to the city council has a recommendation that the council send back to you. To have a standardized pole, maybe by neighborhood, maybe by area investigated. So let's just talk a little bit more about the hundred foot buffer. As I mentioned, the commission was interested in a hundred foot buffer of new facilities from schools and residences. Unless effective prohibition is proven. Um, staff cannot recommend this option. Um, as you know, the ordinance already limits placements in residential zones. In fact, wireless facilities, I think the ordinance uses the word prohibited unless effective prohibition is shown. Um, and we believe that the actual hundred foot buffer presents undue risk of challenges. As significant portions of the city would be unavailable for wireless facility placement. We did have a GIS map prepared or some GIS analysis done and we. At your last meetings, you looked at buffers, I think of fifty feet and a hundred and fifty feet, since the direction was a hundred feet. Um, our depart, uh, GIS department went back and created a hundred foot buffer from schools and residences. And what the yellow represents is there's large areas of the city. That would not be allowed to have wireless facilities. And I know I've given really long presentations in the back, but I really felt that we were down to the last four issues. Staff can recommend all of them, with the exception of the hundred foot setback to schools and residences. We also have our legal counsel. Outside legal counsel, Gail Koresh with BBNK, as well as Christine Davy here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Kim, Commissioners, any questions?
Yes. Stage three oh five package. Then graph, Roman numeral five. Says, uh, the last sentence before it goes to. Subparagraph says, applicants who claim a denial would be a prohibition or effective prohibition. Are encouraged to address at least the following. Are encouraged to. Why not shall? Require them to address at least the following. Any reason why we can't do that?
There is, um, Gail, are you able to answer that?
Hi, good evening, everyone, uh, Gail Koresh, Miss Best and Krieger. Uh, yes, the, there are, there are two reasons. One reason is that. For that, we, we've talked about this, I think, before in other meetings, there are, there are. Uh, there is a test that applies to small wireless facilities in the public right of way. It that came out of the FCC's Small Cell Order that was upheld by the Ninth Circuit. Uh, a material inhibits test, and then there is the, the, we argue that the significant gap, least intrusive means test still applies outside the public right of way. Uh, when it's not small cells or when it's not small cells, and, and so we wouldn't. Uh, you can't say shall for everything on that list. Uh, that list is covering any kind of an effective prohibition claim that might be made. Um, so that's one reason why we don't say it, the other is. Uh, the, the carrier, ultimately, they have to prove their case to you and be, uh, whatever test applies in that particular situation, what they're arguing. And it may be that they may, they would make. Different kind of claims in different circumstances to try to prove an effective prohibition. It might be that something's technically infeasible or something like that, it might not be about a gap, it might be about something else. And so ultimately, what, what we're trying to do in the ordinance is encourage them to provide all the information you would need and we give it examples. But if they don't provide adequate information, then you can find that they didn't prove their case, so. Requiring them could, may just lead to disputes about whether you can require that information in certain circumstances. Uh, but ultimately, they have to prove to you that, 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 um, if they're. Uh, claiming an effective prohibition, they will have to prove that to you. Uh, and they can choose the evidence that they try to do that with, if you're not convinced, then you, you would find against them.
In other words, we can require them to, but if they don't show it to us, they're maybe not showing an effective prohibition.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Milich, anyone else?
Yes.
Yeah, there's Dawson, yes.
All right, um, regarding the two hundred and fifty foot separation. Of facilities. What if, what if we have several providers? And several providers put out there, put out their equipment and they use up all the poles. And they're, the poles are closer than two hundred and fifty feet. So how do you, how do you fix that? That's a question for staff or for, or for best best.
I'll, I'll do my best and then Gail, I mean, you may have actually experienced this in other communities perhaps that have deployed in the public right of way earlier. So we do have four telecommunications firms. That play, that are in the process of deploying facilities in the, in the city of Monterey. And so. You know, the, the, at least as we start out, there, there'll be two hundred and fifty feet. Will be the setback, they could always come back, I believe, and show effective prohibition. If all the poles are, if the regulation prohibits them from deploying their service, I think that they could show that as well, but at least it says upfront. The city's aesthetic goal is two hundred and fifty feet.
And, and I agree that, I agree that, that that's a, that's a really good, um, uh, goal. Um, I'm, I'm afraid though that, uh, that things will get sticky when, uh, when the, there's no space. And, and the four guys are all going for the last two hundred feet.
And Gail, I don't know if you have anything else to offer on that?
Sure, I can, I can add a little bit, so there are sometimes, so every wireless network kind of has, it develops differently because. They may have different macro sites, they may have different demand, and so it's hard to predict, they won't all necessarily. There are some areas that obviously there will be, you know, high demand because people congregate or something like that, and they may all be interested in those areas. But I haven't in, I, I work for a lot of cities looking, you know, that are facing small cell deployments. And I haven't, uh, I haven't really come across big issues like that, uh, yet, I think it's still pretty early in terms of the deployments. Uh, this, that having a separation of facilities is something even the FCC Small Cell Order recognized as. Uh, something that could, you know, be perfectly reasonable for an aesthetic reason. Uh, I, I think, I would say cross that bridge when you come to it because you may never have that level of deployment. In Monterey that you have to worry about it, but it's ultimately, it's a bigger issue for. For a carrier looking for a place to put their facility than it is really for the city trying to protect its aesthetics. You, you have a reasonable aesthetic, if they can't find a spot, maybe they need to. Uh, find a different, uh, place off the public right of way to deploy or, um, uh, look at colocation more closely or something like that.
Okay, I, I just, I just, you, because I was in the industry and, and this is something that really did not show up. In cable TV because once, once you were in a city, you were kind of had the only franchise. But in this case, you got four franchises and possibly more, and so it, the, the situation will arrive in, uh, you know, I guess we'll face it when we see it.
I have a question, I'd follow up on that. Wouldn't we have some kind of indication? Right now, if there's congestion between carriers with four G switching to five G, is, we have the same kind of relationship in terms of their needs and customers?
Well, I mean, I, I think right now we do see, um, but it's a different type of facility right now, I mean, they're on the Marriott, they're on top of. Very tall buildings and we have multiple firms. You know, located on a, on an existing building. Um, the new technology is. Um, you know, they're going to be predominantly on, um. Utility poles in the public right of way. And as we've learned, their, um, their pattern is generally within three hundred feet of each other. Um, where I think we're going to see this first is possibly Cannery Row. But I just worked with a provider the other day and even though they're, they're, they're still looking at putting it on a building versus putting it in the public right of way, so I really think as it. Is deployed in our city. You know, we'll see what happens, but I think, you know, they're probably going to still locate on buildings as much as they can, at least so far.
Is there a perception that it's easier to locate on a building than a public right of way?
I don't know, I mean, not necessarily.
Well, if they're located on a building, they would have a higher. Uh, altitude and greater coverage than on a lower altitude pole. So I would think would be to their advantage to go on a building.
Yeah.
Sandy, do you have any?
Yeah, I have one question, and that is that since the, uh, the idea. Of a setback from a residence or a business is sort of out the window now. And we're talking now about a buffer zone or a number of feet between facilities, which would be. The utility pool with the cellphone capsule on it. Even Paul Albritton says that San Mateo has five hundred feet between facilities. Why would we settle for two fifty if you could get five hundred?
So I think what he was saying in that letter is I read it, is he wanted a maximum search distance, so if they have a pole. With that, that the maximum search distance would be five hundred feet from that pole. Was how I read it, not five hundred feet.
Between poles?
Correct.
So you could have two hundred and fifty feet between poles. And still have the five hundred foot search distance.
That's how I read that letter, I don't know if Gail, I, I think I read it correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
As I read it, it said five hundred what search distance for preferred locations in the right of way as well as. To delete the setbacks from schools and residential properties.
Yes, he was agreeing that the hundred foot. The issue of the hundred foot setback to residences and schools. They, they bring up questions of legality and that, that he's encouraging. I don't think he had a necessarily a specific concern about two hundred and fifty feet, but he wanted a maximum of five hundred feet searching from that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I have a question, it's regarding the, uh, the various examples of poles that you gave, the aesthetic examples, which I found. Challenging to, where the ones had to accommodate the equipment, my question is. Way back when, when those thirteen applications came in, I believe there was some discussion here on planning commission as to putting equipment in the vaults, whatever happened to that conversation, do you remember?
I think our ordinance still has, um. Maybe Chrissy, can you respond?
Yeah, this, the city council did adopt an encroachment ordinance, um, with the undergrounding components are in that section of the code.
So that could be a requirement when we review smalls?
It's already in the code, it's already a requirement, um.
Okay.
I can, I can pull that.
Thank you, that was my question, any other questions from Commissioners?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Mike.
And, and reading the, the letter from, uh, Mr. Albritton. He said, the FCC disfavored. A covered, coverage trap based approach. To prove the need for a facility and disregarded federal court interpretations. Uh, of the federally effective prohibition standards that rely on a search of significant gap in coverage. I would ask our legal counsel, what is the meaning there? That they're disregarding court directions? Which is a problem. What, what are they referring to there? But, but, but he's trying to tell us.
So what, what he's talking about is that, um, in the FCC, when they looked at, uh, the, their, when they adopted their Small Cell Order. They thought, they, they looked at the industry and they said, at this point, you know, the, the. There is a requirement in, in federal law that you can't create an effective prohibition, uh, shorthand, right? An effective prohibition by your regulations or decisions. And they said the, the case law that developed in some circuits. Where it developed at a time when people were just starting to roll out their systems, and so it had that, if you have a significant gap in your system. And this is the least intrusive means of filling that gap, meaning you came as close as you could to complying with the local regulations. Then you were going to be allowed to place that facility because you showed there was a significant, significant gap in service. And they said, well, at this point, the, the, the wireless networks are more built out and what they were really trying to. Uh, help the industry by, uh, having an effective prohibition standard that allowed for smaller placements that might not be filling a coverage gap that they said might be introducing new services. Or adding capacity and things like that, and so in that context, they were saying. Those circuits that had developed this significant gap least intrusive means test. Uh, they, they were, they were disregarding those tests and saying, be, because they are a federal agency. That has authority to interpret their statute and implement it. And they said that the, the statute is ambiguous as to what that means, they have the authority under Chevron, I'm getting really into the weeds here. But they have authority under, um, uh, federal law and case law to be able to interpret that statute. And come up with a test that they think is the appropriate test, and that's what they did with their material inhibits standard. Um, and the Ninth Circuit agreed with them, like upheld that, uh, that part of the order. And so that's why we, uh, at least for small wireless facilities, in our view. And so that's why we, uh, at least for small wireless facilities, in our view, is that only apply, that rationale that the FCC had for changing the test only really applied to small wireless facilities. Because that was the topic of the order. So what Paul Albreton is, is saying is the FCC disregarded those, uh, tests, but they had the authority to do it.
Yeah. Well, if, if that's true, then the effective prohibition is a detriment to the due process by having those short time limits. We're stuck. Uh, when our constitution was written, the time limits were a lot different than they are now because it took sometimes a month to get to a hearing. And now we're, we're doing it virtual and or in person within a week. So big difference and the, our Supreme Court has said that from the time when the constitution was written, there was a different perspective regarding some of these things. And so we're from what I'm hearing, that we're stuck with these time limits. And we're stuck with the, the pressure that it puts on the local community to not deny these, this, any idea that there might be infringing upon other people's considerations and rights. I'm really interested in what I read in all this material this week. And much of it is thirty the time. That we haven't really progressed. So what Kim was trying to outline into four parts, we're still stuck.
Yeah.
We can't pass some of these things. I'm, I'm trying to phrase these into questions, Chair, but it's, it's a part of the discussion of what the topic is. Where we can't get around it, this thing, every meeting we come up with different questions for staff because it just keeps revolving. Uh, I also listened to a letter by one of the people that sent it one in and it talked about who is responsible for ensuring the continuing safety of mutual telecommunications devices by mutual companies? Who is in charge of oversight of this? We haven't addressed that, that I have seen. And I listened to what Mike brought up earlier. It's basically the same thing. What do we need to do to recognize this? And it's, I don't see a way to recognize it. I think Kim hit it on the head when they're just going to have to react to it as it comes in. But that's not the way to build a boat. And we're trying to sail this boat down the road to council.
Was that a question?
No. Uh, I bet the frustration that we keep coming back to the, the same issue. And trying to put it in the form of a question, I, how do we do that? The staff is recommending that we not do 100 foot setback. What are the alternatives? The 500 foot rule and of areas?
Uh, may I comment?
Well, I think we're going to take that up under, uh, deliberations from the planning commission. That's, that's big subject, obviously, and that's what we're here for tonight. Are there any other questions from, um, commissioners? Okay, thank you all. We're going to open it up to, um, public hearing and as we did before, we'll alternate between chambers and online testimony. Jennifer, do you want to give the numbers again? We are, yes, we are doing our training. Great.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, toll-free. Once again, the phone number to call is 833-568-8864, and it is toll-free. And enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 1619908039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. And just a reminder, there is a three-minute time limit.
Okay, we'll take the first, uh, from council chambers.
If you will speak, please state your name for the record. If you feel comfortable doing so. Sure.
Pat Benz, I'm on a Monterey Vista resident. Dear planning commissioners, um, after hearing Mr. Brassfield, I just want to say that I'm a little more optimistic than, than he is tonight. Uh, I do believe that once again, the planning commission has been, we're representing the people of Monterey. It seems like it has been a long back and forth, but because of your understanding of the residents' concerns and your insight, I think we are almost there. I do have a couple of comments on the document before you tonight. And I went by the page number, not by the whole packet, but within there. On page 11, about the noise, the last sentence has been removed. It is a good clarification that the modifications that might add noise cannot be added after permit. Uh, you may feel that this is covered on page 31, number seven, which is about modifications for any reason. And I guess I would just like to hear if you feel that that is sufficient and/or if leaving that sentence in wouldn't help the, um, make it more clear. On page 13, the signal coverage, why not say maps generated using drive test data? If not drive test data, then what kind of maps would they be based on? On page 13, uh, the drive tests. Of course, that's been my big thing all along, and I appreciate that this has been added. And I am still a little confused about Gail and Kim's comments on drive test data at earlier meetings. And I guess even tonight, it came up again. Something like it can be recommended but not required. The way it reads here, it sounds pretty much like a requirement to me if they're claiming prohibition of service. On page 14, provide drop call records and denial of service records. How is this data collected? When did it also be through drive test? And if it is, why not? Why not say it? And it isn't, is there any other way to do it? On page 26, the setbacks follows what Mr. Millich proposed and what the planning commission approved. It states that this is based on visual clutter. I'm wondering if reason could not be added to it. Safety is another reason for this 100 foot setback. This provides a fall zone. Many of the poles are old and falling could be an issue. The mock-up is, was totally removed. That is not what I heard at the last meeting. Rather, Mr. LaTessa, Tessa, uh, felt that the rest, and the rest of the commissioners responded favorably that 3D diagrams would replace the full-size mock-up. And I do not see that, and it should be added with the definition. And I'm hoping you'll bear with me. As Mr. Millich pointed out, the financial risk is minimal on the 100-foot setback. So I'm hoping you'll stick with it and it makes the strongest legally possible wireless ordinance. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to online.
Okay, I do see someone with the name Ray Myers. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Ray Myers. I live in the Monterey Vista neighborhood. Um, cellular wireless facilities simply don't belong in residential areas when there's other more appropriate locations to satisfy the need for cellular communication. This should not exclusively include the need for faster or wider broadband for the sake of internet service. The requisite speeds and bandwidth for internet services can now be accomplished with wired technology such as fiber optic and cable service to the home or business. From within your premise, a wireless router can optionally expand your service for personal or business use without causing visual bite or potential adverse effects on the residents. The city wireless ordinance must be as protective and strong as allowable, and we must mandate every requirement for EMF safety compliance and visual impact be included in your ordinance to protect the general public. But as proposed, a setback requirement of 100 feet for an antenna would not amount to a prohibition. Current technologies will allow both 4G LTE and 5G broadcasts on both low bands and mid bands within, closes 100 feet to the, uh, within the need to locate cellular antennas within residential neighborhoods, especially was close as 100 feet. It's well-known that, that, um, high bands, millimeter waves have the highest potential for bandwidth and speed for wireless services, but require the antennas to be densified or close in proximity to users. This is unnecessary for the public and may appear to be an effort to use public right of way for enhancing private industry. The ordinance should also require models for graphically predicting 2 and 3D field radiation patterns and the topography and elevations of the structures within these patterns so the public can visually see what levels of effective radiant power will occur at various heights and distance from the proposed antennas. Please reject the city staff changes for the wireless ordinance and continue the 100-foot setback requirement and other provisions to make it as strong as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening, Susan Nine. Um, first of all, I'd just like to say, please don't rely on Verizon attorneys to define the law for you. Um, and secondly, do not allow them to write our wireless ordinance for us. Um, I'd just like to point out that Carmel recently denied a residential cell tower, um, to Verizon, uh, and that was appealed by Verizon in the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit Court upheld the city's decision, and this is long after the decision in Portland. So, um, please, um, realize that you have much more power and authority than, um, what Verizon might be tempting you to, um, minimize. In Contra Costa County, no, um, their ordinance states no new high-visibility tower or new tower at all may be established in or within 300 feet of any of the following: single residential family, two-family, multiple-family. In Mendocino's ordinance, antenna towers shall be subject to setbacks required by the county zoning code and shall be a minimum of 500% of the overall height from any, um, of the, of the, uh, facility, uh, in the right of way from any residence or school. Numerous US cities and towns are passing ordinances to restrict the proliferation of wireless antennas near homes and schools with the authority that they have granted to them by the, uh, Federal Telecommunications Act. Other communities that have passed ordinances to restrict cell antennas near homes and schools include numerous cities in California such as Petaluma, Mill Valley, Malibu, Santa Barbara, Encinitas, Fairfax, Walnut City, Walnut City, and San Diego County, Contra Costa County, and Mendocino County, and many others. These I just came up with, with the 30 minutes I had to Google today. In, um, Petaluma, they, the ordinance states that each small cell must be at least 1,500 feet from the nearest small cell facility. 250 feet is not enough. Uh, each small cell must be at least 500 feet away from any existing or approved residence. Um, that's also Petaluma. I live on the shortest street in Monterey County in Monterey Vista neighborhood. It's over 750 feet long. It's one block. That means three cell towers could be built on the shortest street, one-blocked street in, in our, um, in our town. Um, I think 1,000 feet is, is more reasonable for, if you really want to achieve any sort of aesthetic regulation over the placement of these facilities, which was upheld, by the way, as a basis for denial in the Portland case aesthetics. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, online?
We do have someone with the last phone number digits, 902. You should be able to speak now.
Yes, this is Nina B. D. Um, I have requests I've made in the past, and I'm going to make many of them again. Uh, require noticing to all property owners, renters, and tenants. 66% of Monterey residents are shut out at the present time. This is a civil rights and due process thing. Notify all residents here and, and tenants of commercial buildings. Expand the notification area to 500 to 1,000 feet. Other areas have done this. This is only fair. Require all parties to be present at hearings, not just the contractors, but the service providers, the land or property owners, and the RF engineers so that questions can be answered. Antenna proliferation is far beyond the four telecoms. Antennas, sensors, nodes for many functions in companies, including Comcast, Comcast Xfinity, downlink and uplink antennas, um, and ground stations for satellites, et cetera, all will be vying for space in the city. Reject the standardized approved designs language. It will tie your hands. Include on the city webpage a map of all wireless communications facilities. In the exhibit A, um, this planning document is not exempt from CEQA, as I read CEQA. On page three, for all other applications pre-existing provisions, what is being proposed here for this all other applications that apply, that pre-existing provisions provide? And third, page 37, there's a new exemption under definitions of wireless communications facilities. B, wireless devices attached to the exterior of a building. Reject this new addition. Um, this new, it is not clear. OTAR covers these relevant issues. Reinstate under B2 applicability, A and B on ADA compliance and revoking permits. Page 23, under public rights away, ban strand mounting, which the committee agreed to, and they struck any, any ability to put, amount any equipment on the strands, on the, the, uh, buyer, the wires, uh, in the streets. Reinstate the section, uh, under A, impact on public use. The city shall not approve any facilities or any equipment in the right of way that unreasonably subject the public use to inconvenience, et cetera, et cetera. That's in the current ordinance, reinstate it. On page five, temporary cell towers, delete the special exemption, special event exception. There's no hearing, no notice, no RF report, two months or longer. They must be treated like regular applications. Add to the RF exposure compliance report and must include the actual frequency and power levels of all existing and proposed antennas and cumulative exposure from everything in the vicinity. Don't increase the equipment and standoff allowances. Mockups are required by Rancho Palestine. They've been able to deal with this. Add on page four, the radar altimeter interference from 5G. It's not just structural problems, it's also 5G interference with radar altimeters. Add ADA and FHA to approval conditions on page five. The, you have been, ignored have been TCA sections 601(c)(1), 251, 255, 256, and 332(a)(1) and 47(USC)(414). No wonder you're confused. TCI, TCA requires express language for preemption of local, state, or federal laws. It adopts ADA definitions and requires accessibility, and it doesn't abridge or alter existing remedies. And 47(USC)(332(a)(1) Congress stated the FCC's first duty is to promote the safety of life and property. Finally, setbacks are required by other communities, and we need them from not just.
Thank you, Nina. All right, next in the chambers?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Martha Krapczek, and I'm here to thank you for your efforts to support the strongest wireless ordinance possible for the city of Monterey. I hope that you, as our planning commissioners, will stand with our community regarding the 100-foot setback in this cell tower ordinance. The health concerns and noise from these cell towers are a concern for all residential neighborhoods, and you should make sure that this setback is not removed or reduced regardless of staff recommendations. The 100-foot setback should be maintained, not only for aesthetic purposes, but especially for safety in our high-fire hazard zones. The language in the current draft ordinance still allows antenna height increases of four additional feet or more if necessary to achieve separation from electrical facilities. The ordinance ultimately adopted should retain the two-foot limitation existing in our current ordinance. The proposed version of this ordinance also allows for 15-inch-deep cabinet equipment cab, cab, 15-inch-deep equipment cabinets on poles with up to a four-inch standoff mounts. That change would almost double the distance, the distance equipment, equipment would be allowed to stand out from the pole when, upon which it is mounted. This language weakens our existing ordinance considerably and impacts aesthetic views from our streets and in our neighborhoods. Please keep the health and safety of our community in mind, and know that the cost of a lawsuit from the telecom industries is minor compared to the risk to residents. That risk is worth whatever it takes to keep the ordinance as strong as legally possible. Thank you for listening and responding to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else online? Can you hold up just, we're going to go online first. Thank you.
And we do have one more hand raised. Someone with the last digits 941.
Good evening, planning commissioners. The city council asks for the strongest possible ordinance. The draft ordinance that staff is proposing, proposing is definitely not the strongest possible ordinance. Have any of you read the strong telecom ordinances from other California cities, such as Mill Valley, Sonoma, Fairfax, Ross, Ben Anselma, or Petaluma? Ben Anselma's ordinance is very well thought out and very detailed. If you haven't read these, you should. It would give you a good idea of what strong ordinances should look like. Petaluma has a setback of 500 feet. Other California cities' ordinances have 1,500-foot setbacks. It's difficult to believe that staff is opposed to a 100-foot setback. Residents do not want unsightly noisy cell towers that have not been proven to be safe right next to homes and schools. Staff is also opposing the life-size model mockup that, of the proposed equipment. These mockups are very important to accurately assess the visual and aesthetic impact of the bulky and heavy industrial equipment proposed for utility poles on views, neighborhoods, character, and property values. The ordinance being proposed by staff also allows substantially higher antennas on the right-of-way of utility poles and greater stand-up of ancillary equipment from poles than what is allowed under the current in-effect ordinance, which also will result in greater, not less, aesthetic and visual impact and increased fire and safety risk. Thank you.
Can I ask who's calling, or which one you missed? I think we lost her. Sounded very familiar to me. Right, next, tip from the chamber?
Commissioners, I'm Bruce Sneta, resident of Monterey and Monterey Vista neighborhood.
You speak up, please.
Okay. And I'm a member of the underground subcommittee. Been up, been up for quite a few years. The underground subcommittee has been working for quite some time for the ultimate goal of undergrounding power and communications throughout the city of Monterey. That's our goal. Leadership and interest, discovering new avenues of funding, and have a comprehensive survey coming out in just the next couple of days. But if this city does not get the cell tower, to get the cell towers in the neighborhood thing right, then all our undergrounding efforts and those efforts moving forward could very well be all for naught. Neighborhood, neighborhood cell towers can become an underground killer as they can put above ground the very unsightly infrastructure we're trying to remove. They can replace the current infrastructure with another unsightly version, or they threaten to grandfather in the existing. I'm going to quote something that was said here earlier this evening. Typically, all util, typically, they're going to be on all utility poles. You've got four players here. That's, that doesn't bode well for undergrounding. Remember, one of the proposals is to locate transmitters on the communication lines. So not only poles, but, but in between those poles. How does this work if we are trying to move that very infrastructure below ground and out of our, our view shed? It does not, it torpedoes underground. That is why I like this 100-foot setback proposal by this commission. It gives us back our undergrounding goal. The city had, the city on a beautiful bay deserves undergrounding, and it deserves this, this stroke of genius by this Monterey Planning Commission. It deserves nothing less. Now, if, if the staff feels that, that they can't get, get, find their way to this 100-foot thing, then maybe there's, they can come up with something that is equally as good or, or some sort of compromise. Let me suggest something. How about, this is done in other planned communities where they have undergrounding? All, the only thing they have, allow above ground is light poles, architectural light poles. How about if we just restrict on those cell towers to those light poles? So anyway, thank you for your, your trying to solve the problems.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else online?
There are no hands raised online currently.
Go ahead, please. It's your name?
Thank you, Jean Rash, Monterey resident, Monterey Vista neighborhood. Thank you once again, planning commission, for all your understanding and service. I do hope you'll hold, hold strong. I hope you'll continue to support the 100-foot setbacks from the residents. I hope you'll stand strong with a minimum of the 3D imaging for the visualization. I prefer mockups. We found out that it was very invaluable to visualize the cell towers when the one went up on Wave Street. Please stand firm on the capacity issue documentation. To me, that would include the drop cell map drive test data and the drop cell data. Please hold strong with the distance between facilities. I vote 500 feet. And notice to all residents, I think Nina Beatty had a very important point, that equity demands that it go to all residents and no temporary exceptions. I want to point out to you that we recently had Monterey Vista neighborhood and Old Town forums for the mayoral candidates, and they were very clear. Councilmember Williamson is a strong proponent of hearing what the residents want and having a lot of dialogue and a lot of response to residents. On the question of cell towers, Mr. Albert, Dan Albert vehemently stated that he does not want small cell towers in neighborhoods. So I implore you to keep trying for your strongest protective ordinances so that we don't have to come around to this again at the city level. Let's, let's stay strong and work it out and, and get the strongest ordinance that we can so, so that we can finish the topic well and not have to continue it to the city council level. Telecommunications act specifically preserves local authority over the placement, construction, and maintenance of wireless facilities. Let's preserve our power now at the planning commission level and protect our city. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Jean. Jennifer, anyone online?
I just need to, like, my battery's low. Technical difficulties are the
Technical difficulties.
Honorable members of the planning commission, I'm Jeannie Ferrara, and I respectfully request that you listen with an open mind and an open heart to what I have to say. I've been a Realtor in the city of Monterey for 18 years. Research has shown that property values dramatically decrease when cell towers are installed nearby. Property, taxpaying homeowners must be protected. The staff proposed city wireless or before you is not the strongest possible wireless ordinance mandated by the city council. The staff opposes the 100-foot minimum setback requirement for wireless antenna facilities away from residential homes and schools. This should be mandatory. The staff ordinance also allows substantially higher antennas on our overburdened utility poles in our residential rights-of-way. And staff opposes life-size mockups of the property of the proposed equipment necessary for city officials to accurately assess the aesthetic impact. Drive-by connectivity testing must also be used to determine if there is even a need for more equipment for gap in coverage. The city of Carmel hired Andrew Campanelli, a brilliant lawyer who's created wireless ordinances across the country to successfully protect residents from the, the giant telecom corporations who want to eliminate municipal control. They have no concern for health and safety of citizens or the environment. They only care about unlimited profit. Because of the recent devastating California fires, my home insurance premiums in Monterey Vista neighborhood have almost tripled because my home is in a high-fire hazard zone. Verizon has recalled over 2.5 million mobile Wi-Fi hotspots due to fire risk, overheating, fires, and minor burns. The heat created by millions of these proposed wireless facilities will contribute to global warming and must be avoided. The FCC has not updated their safety standards since 1996, but EMF radiation has increased in strength exponentially in the past 25 years. Children's Health Defense recently won a court case, CHD versus FCC, 5G and wireless radiation guidelines lawsuit, with the court ordering the FCC to revisit their safety guidelines for RF radiation because of overwhelming evidence contrary to their current safety standards. If the wireless ordinance before you has passed, proposed wireless antennas will be irradiating Monterey citizens and the environment 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for perpetuity with no safety testing. The world's largest insurance companies have responded by excluding any liability coverage for claims, in quotes, directly or indirectly arising out of, resulting from, or contributed to by electromagnetic fields, electromagnetic radiation, electric, electromagnetism, radio waves, or noise, end quote. Lloyds of London and Swiss Re Insurance Company have put wireless radiation in the highest-risk category next to smoking and asbestos. The $100 million taxpayers' money in the American Jobs Act for high-speed broadband access must be okay. I respectfully urge you, the planning commission, to, to give us the strongest possible wireless ordinance already mandated by the city council. I beg you to consider an ordinance written by Andrew Campanelli instead of the weak ordinance written by BBK legal team and the city staff. Your hands are not tied. You, the planning commissioners and city council, make the important decisions for our historic city, not the city staff. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer, how are we looking online?
There are no attendees with their hands raised online. We do have some people who have not spoken yet, so in case somebody has forgotten how they can raise their hands, do that by, if you're joined via Zoom on the computer, you can use the raise-your-hand function at the bottom of your screen, or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute. No hands are going up. And did everyone in person get a chance to comment if they wished to?
Okay, then I think we'll close our public testimony, and we'll bring it back to commissioners for deliberation. Can you bring Mike and Mike back on the screen?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I missed their mugs. There we are.
God bless you.
Well, we're back. Mike, I'm Mike. I know we all have a lot to say about this. Who would like to start off? Okay, Mike Dawson?
We've had a lot of discussion tonight about 100-foot setback for facilities from residences. I want to point out that most of the houses, the single-family houses in Monterey are on 50 by 100-foot lots. And a lot of them have a, you know, like 15 and 20-foot setback from the curb. So you're blocking out totally the ability to, to drop a, drop a, a drop to these houses to get them service. I, I don't think that that can work. In, get, if, if I'm wrong, tell, tell me, Kim, isn't, didn't we kind of decide that 100-foot was not, was not doable?
Well, staff's conclusion is that the 100-foot setback to residents and schools eliminates too much of the city from facilities.
Right.
Oops.
Is there too much of the city?
Somebody's wrestling a dog.
I mean, what is too much?
Well, if you think of some cities and rural areas, you know, 100 feet from a residence may never even come up as a, as an issue. In our city, we're 50 by 100 lots, and I had, we prepared the GIS map, and I could bring that up again.
No.
It shows the majority of the city would be precluded from having these facilities, and we think at the staff level that puts the city at undue legal risk. You already have the prohibition, remember, to not locate in the residential neighborhoods unless you show an effective prohibition. So we think that is a stronger approach to the ordinance than the 100-foot setback.
I got more questions, or?
Kim, I have a question on that. We have a map showing the preferred areas of right-of-way that they could use instead.
So you're asking, do we have a map showing the right-of-way where outside of residential neighborhoods? Is that what you're saying?
Just the preferred locations where we would like to see these sites instead of in the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, we don't have a map of that. Our ordinance
Commercial is where you're looking, right?
Commercial and industrial areas. We could prepare a map that shows where our commercial and industrial areas are. And then I believe it, you know, once we get down to the residential areas, it says, instead of putting it next to a residence, if there's a space within that neighborhood that's not a residence, that would be preferred. You know, there might be a park location, there might be something like that versus directly in front of somebody's house. If you get to the point that it's in the residential neighborhood, then you have to show effective prohibition. They have to prove to the planning commission that they, they're prohibited from providing the service. And then the question was brought up, well, what evidence do you have to submit? And there are suggestions in our ordinance, drive-by tests, those different types of information to be submitted to the planning commission. But, you know, the carrier may submit completely different information based on what the actual prohibition, what's causing the prohibition. And the planning commission's going to exercise the judgment whether or not you've been convinced of that.
One of the reasons why I asked about the map showing those referred areas is that it might reduce some of the conflict of just having a provider come in that we want this site versus maybe nearby sites that the city has identified. In my mind, we're going to get this conflict no matter what, but I'm just trying to reduce some of them. Because I've heard all kinds of opinions regarding how far, how close, but we're not making it easy for the providers to identify alternatives. Is that our job? Are we saying it's not our job?
Well, I think our ordinance clearly outlines that, you know, we encourage it in commercial and industrial areas. So if you're a wireless provider, you're going to look at our zoning map and general plan map to find where the commercial areas are. Um we could easily prepare a map um with basically a click of a button to show where our commercially zoned properties and industrial zone properties are in the city.
And those sites that you identified as maybe the the edge of a park or something. That's what I'm looking to see if we could kind of make it a little easier to then then presenting uh their studies of why they want to put it there.
Well, they're gonna need to under obviously, they'll understand their network and logically what works, and then they should look and our ordinance asks them to look for industrially and commercially zoned property to serve that need.
Yeah. Kim, do we ask? You had four areas you wanted to discuss tonight. Did we address all four of them?
So the the draft ordinance in front of you includes all of those four items and the resolution. Um the one area that staff's asking you to reconsider is the hundred-foot setback to schools and residences. We could recommend the planning commission, the or the ordinance that we think the planning commission will be recommending with that one omission that we added at your direction.
No opinion?
I think Sandy has something.
Yeah, I have something to say. Uh I think we all started on the same road several years ago when Verizon came in and suggested thirteen towers in Monterey Vista neighborhood, and that put them on a level of mistrust that has not been corrected. And no one, I don't think anyone is suggesting that Verizon write the ordinance for us. Luther Chris. Um the road separated, I think, with the subcommittee and the city staff going forward and creating an ordinance that meets today's needs, not tomorrow's needs, but today's needs. And today, Kim and Christine have brought forth corrections to the ordinance that are quite specific. One, two, three, and four. But the public comment remains on the other road where we just don't want it. And whether it's for aesthetic reasons or hazardous to the health reasons, we just don't want it. The ordinance is going to be presented to the city council. The same issues are going to come up and the same comments are going to be made, and I think the city staff has done a very good job of bringing forward the issues that can be solved today. Maybe they can't be solved tomorrow, but they can be solved today. So as a commissioner, going on the road towards solution and not just we don't want it. Uh I think the photo simulation at this point in time is a worthy solution. I think separating the facilities by a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet with uh five hundred-foot coverage is a solution. I agree that the one hundred-foot buffer from schools and residences may work interlock where, you know, the farm properties are acres. But here we have lots that are fifty by a hundred feet. I don't think it works here. And I think that the standardized pole design as it comes up is a good idea. So I'm in support of the ordinance um with the changes that Kim has suggested, particular to separating the facilities by a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, uh is there anywhere in there any relief granted from uh uh effective prohibition showing shall be the least intrusive? We have that in there. I think that should be in there. I don't know if we have the least intrusive and apply to specific site, location, installation, uh and height and et cetera. That's the first thing, but more more importantly, I think, is um by taking a look at the hundred-foot setback and why I'm so much in favor of it. The hundred-foot setback in schools and residences with specific uh showing of a need at that location. Let's look at the ordinance, the hundred feet. If we're saying you cannot have relief from that, the answer is yes, you can, if you have an effective show of effective prohibition. It's undefined as to what it means. We don't know. The courts don't know. They argue back and forth. If we add the hundred-foot setback and the effective prohibition is a fallback. Let's say it's held invalid. Well, the ordinance is separable. The rest of the ordinance is not 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 thrown out. It stands. The ordinance is stronger. A lawsuit is likely, we hear. Okay, unless we let it be drafted by the attorneys for the uh uh the providers.
Yeah.
But even if we did that, the providers will have to sue each other because one provider doesn't like what the other provider drafted. And had it so, I mean. And if there is a lawsuit, it will take years. And what is the city's, what is the city's damage? How what do we lose? Do we have to pay attorney's fees? We pay our own attorney's fees. We pay their court costs if we lose, we pay our court cost. We don't play attorney's fees um other than our own. What's that be? Two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars could be, could be that, could be more. First month factor to take into account. Um now it's interesting because, you know, Sandy, you said, gosh knows when, long ago, about this whole thing might even be moved in the in the near future because of going to settle for laser service. Well, you know, it's funny that you mentioned that because a week ago, Monday, okay, October seventeenth, The Wall Street Journal had an entire article, our title section on five G technology, the space race to provide satellites receiving s- uh signals from cell towers, et cetera, et cetera. And the first uh workable one supposedly, according to this, is set for the latter part of twenty twenty-three. So this may be much ado about nothing. If we're looking two or three years down the road, there may not even be any uh towers for satellites in residential areas. Uh and I think it's important that we try and protect our citizens as long as we can if we can. Uh the law is in flux with different courts disagreeing. You know, we talk about and Gail talked about the uh the deference to administrative agencies interpreting their own uh their own statutes. Well, there's a West Virginia case where the U. Kella, the United States Supreme Court says, hey, in the past, you could do that. We're not doing that anymore. You can you cannot go beyond the grant of authority that was given to you. It very well be that the Ninth Circuit is relying upon an interpretation which the Supreme Court will knock out down the road. And will it knock it down on the road? I don't know. But I do know that the the different circuits, the Second Circuit goes differently from the Ninth Circuit. And when you have the circuits disagreeing with each other on important issues, that's when the US Supreme Court stands here. The law is in flux. In the meantime, hundred feet back setback gives us a stronger ordinance to protect our residents and children. And I'm not talking about RF. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the aesthetics also. Do you want to wake up and look outside your window and see a pole sitting out there outside your bedroom? No. Uh and I agree with with Dan Albert. These things don't work in residential areas, and I think we should keep them out as long as we can. And if it costs us some money and our own attorney's fees to go to court on that, well, that's uh that's a risk we're willing to take if we go ahead and adopt the ordinance. And I I don't fault our attorneys, and I don't fault staff. They're doing what is the safest thing to do, and that's their job. And I think, you know, sometimes you see you you have to hear what you don't want to hear with what you need to hear. Is that the case? I don't know. But I do know, I think it's worth it, at least for my vote, to say that I'm going to vote for the hundred-foot setback, and if it's not there, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Are you saying then the provider would have to prove effective prohibition?
Yes.
And the city would not have to defend the uh hundred-foot setback. It would be up to the provider to have.
If the provider shows an effective prohibition, they're granted an exemption. And then the exemptions would be for that pole or the poles, and that's why I want to add to it that uh any relief granted for from effective prohibition showing shall be the least intrusive and apply to a specific site, location, installation, and height. I think that way we've given an out, and we've also provided as strong a an ordinance as we can. So I think the hundred feet is essential, and I think the the exemption uh is also essential to it. And that's my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I think I agree. Um so I've been sitting here thinking, you know, this tremendous amount of work has been done over the years from committee, planning commission, and staff, and we're at the ninety-yard line, and we need to get it over, but it's going to be up to the city council to do that. I've sat on boards and commissions for over thirty years, and I I think on this one, I have to go with what I think aesthetically seems right for the city. I mean, when you think about the visual clutter that we're already assaulted with, and then you think about the short street that would potentially have three, you know, cell towers on, I I just, it's frightening when you put it in that kind of perspective. Um when I listened to the tape from the last meeting, I was in support of what you all proposed and voted on, and I still am from that standpoint. I think the the city council has a little bit different view to take into consideration. They have to determine what risk they're willing to take from a legal standpoint by having the strongest possible ordinance on this. Um and you know, that's a that's a tough job in my mind, but that's their job. Our job is just a little bit different, and for me, it's going to be about the aesthetics and um trying to maintain. I mean, we're losing so much control through other ordinances with its state, their design review, and, you know, housing and all sorts of stuff. It's frightening to think what potentially is coming down the pipeline for the city in terms of being able to control our aesthetic. So I'm in support of what was previously approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, one other area that I would like to open is the representation of what this equipment looks like. The current ordinance requires model numbers of all the parts to these cell towers. The idea that staff would have to kind of herd of any representation of what the cell tower looks like, I I don't find it reasonable. In my mind, a three D mockup with all appropriate dimensions, including height from the ground, et cetera, or any other building, I think is something that we need to approve as well. Sure, it would be nice if we could do a a representation, but I I just see it fraught with too many issues and draining of what little staff time that we have. So I I would hope that we can include in that the three D mockups.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else, commissioners?
Thank you. The model.
All right, can we entertain a motion?
Okay.
Yes, please.
I would move that we recommend uh an ordinance to the city council repealing replacement city code chapter thirty-eight, article seventeen, section one, one, two point four, related to wireless communication facilities exempt from CQ. Uh with the additional, with the addition of any relief granted from uh an effective prohibition showing shall be the least intrusive and apply to. Sure.
Because you already have it written down.
If I if I can ask a question, our Vice Chair Milich, could I ask a question? Are you talking about? Are you trying to dictate to the court the relief that would be granted? Who, what are you talking about relief granted from? Are you talking about what the court?
Granted from by by the commission from uh due to an effective showing, effective prohibition showing.
I see.
That's why I said.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I think, could I direct you to uh page your packet, page three twenty-one, which is page twenty-eight?
It would be on page uh probably page three nine, take a look at page three nineteen, three twenty of the uh.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest, if you look at uh the use permit findings, there may be language there that you would think satisfactory, or that may be language you want to modify a little bit. But it's on page twenty-eight of the ordinance. Um uh I believe, and it's the you, it's it's letter C, so it's J two C. So it says um um when they're talking about an approval that's dealing with an effective prohibition, the applicant proves that denial would result in an actual or effective prohibition or otherwise violate applicable laws such as the city is such that the city is required to permit applicant to install wireless communications facility. And then on the next page, the wireless communications facility adheres to the defined standards except to the minimum extent necessary to avoid an effective prohibition. And that gives an example. It says, by way of example and not limitation, if applicant shows a larger antenna is required than is permitted, so permitted under your standards, uh under the design standards, application of this section would permit a larger antenna, but not placement of cabinets on above ground. So that that was the language that was developed to address that point that if you're going to grant an effective uh uh, you know, some leeway from compliance with the standards based on effective prohibition, it should uh the facility should adhere to the design standards, except to the minimum extent necessary to avoid an effective prohibition. Does that, I think that's kind of what you were getting at.
That's a good place to add it. No, it doesn't include it. It should include any release granted shall be the least intrusive.
Well, we can add least intrusive, but the the meaning of least intrusive in the i- is typically that it will be um the minimum extent necessary, right? That's another way of saying it, however you feel most comfortable.
Put the phrase in definitions as well.
So has Steve stalled? Well, do we add necessary to avoid an effective prohibition and be the least intrusive? That I think would accomplish it, wondered.
What was your alternative language, Gail?
I was just pointing out to the language that's there and asking if that satisfied uh the concern. Uh I I think what I'm hearing is you wanted to add uh so it's a, except to the minimum extent necessary to avoid an effective prohibition and to be the least intrusive, something like that. Is that right?
One factor.
And be least intrusive.
And and be the least intrusive.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And add a definition of least intrusive definition.
There's no definition of effective prohibition. Least intrusive.
Actually, no one has a definition of that.
There are lots of definitions, that's the problem.
So.
Yeah, well, different.
Different corps, the FCC, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's my motion.
And do we have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sandy, beat you to it. Mike?
That's okay.
A motion and a second for their discussion.
So just for clarification, you're recommending the ordinance that's attached in the packet. It includes the hundred feet. And then under section J2C, we're adding, um, adheres to, it already adheres to the design standards, except to the minimum extent necessary to avoid an effective provision and be the least intrusive.
And be the least intrusive, yes.
Correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything further?
I just want to say that there are two hazy areas here that could end up being modified case by case. One is the photo simulation. What if it doesn't work? What if it turns out that we do it once and it's just not sufficient? Well, it's time to then revisit the ordinance and get some, you know, they have 3D printing machines. So the other one is the standardized pole design by area. That's another fuzzy area that, you know, the first case that comes up that you end up, you say, well, this is going to be our standardized polls designed for Monterey Vista neighborhood. And it turns out, well, no.
And it's only going to be used for five years.
The hardcore changes that were made today are the hundred foot buffer and the separation of facilities by 250 feet. That, those are numbers.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
And another comment?
Yes, Mike.
The, the fact that, that, that Steve is willing to go the, the, what the, every single, every single item is, is a prohibition. I mean, that, that doesn't, that doesn't help me at all. Um, that, that hundred foot, that hundred foot number is going to result in all kinds of pain and agony. And I, I don't know why you'd want to go on, go ahead and do that.
I thought I explained myself.
I heard it.
Okay, you don't believe it? Okay.
But will that become the reality?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's the reality. I explained the reality to you. It's a risk. Okay?
It's, it's a risk that you might not have to take.
Do you vote yes or you vote no?
Okay.
Yes, we do have a motion and we do have a second. And are we ready for a roll call vote? Jennifer?
Yes, we are. Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich? Krishner Brassfield?
No.
Krishner Dawson?
No.
Krishner Freeman?
Yes.
Krishner Latasa is absent. Um, so we do have only three votes for this.
Me too.
Yeah, so the motion passes and it will be sent to the city council.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank everybody involved in this. It's been a long, arduous process without a doubt, very difficult. I appreciate all the various opinions that have been given over the years and the work from the planning commissioners and especially commissioners that sat on the subcommittee and all that time they spent, it was, this was a big one for us. So thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda for this evening. That's item number eight. That's consider 601 Lighthouse Avenue Use Permit Application UP 220115 to allow residential density to exceed 30 units per acre. In this case, it's 36 units per acre. Post, additional design finding is required for that. This is for a commercial building conversion to a mixed use building with five residential units, new interior parking, roof access, roof deck, and ground level retail space. The applicant is Ethan Hair, Hair Construction. The owner is Monterey 601 Lighthouse Avenue LLC. The zone is PCLH, Commercial General Plan Land Use Designation, exempt from sequel requirements per article 19, section 15303, class 3, and section 15331, class 31. We have a staff report, please.
Chris, is your mic not working? I know you're there. Your presentation's up.
It's the night for mics.
Well, someone said they changed Zoom yesterday.
Oh, no.
I can probably.
I can see that he's speaking and.
We can hear you. Thanks, Chris.
I forgot that. So as I was saying, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner with the city of Monterey, and I've been working with the applicant on this project for quite some time now. So, uh, yes, we're looking at a use permit to allow residential destiny to exceed 30 units per acre for a commercial building converted and to mixed use. Uh, so the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution approving this use permit with conditions of approval. Uh, just background information about the site. Here we see it is located in the new Monterey side of Monterey on Lighthouse Avenue at the corner of Lighthouse and Hoffman Avenue. Um, and I also wanted to just show a map showing the surrounding land use. Um, generally, uh, it's, it's in a mixed use neighborhood. The, the lighthouse corridor is zone for mixed use. Um, to the east is our multifamily R3 zone and has a mix of multifamily and single family uses. Uh, commercial, canary, uh, commercial and canary road commercial to the west, directly adjacent to the site, directly east. Uh, there is a religious assembly, there's a church there. Um, and then you can see scattered and this kind of darker blue, purpleish color. We have a number of visitor accommodation facilities, hotels, motels, and there is a hostel as well, uh, in the neighbor, in the multifamily neighborhood. Um, so the project description, as I mentioned, is conversion to mixed use. This is an existing, uh, commercial building that previously contained uh, two retail spaces at the ground floor, fronting Lighthouse Avenue and a theater above the Paper Wing Theater. Uh, the applicant is requesting density to be increased uh, above 30 units per acre as a tariff. That the proposal is for density of 36 units per acre. It'd be a total of five units at the site. New interior parking, uh, new roof access through a stair and elevator penthouse structures uh, with a new roof deck. Uh, and then the ground for retail would be reduced in size. Um, and basically by a little bit less than half of the current and would be reduced to a single retail space. Explain here, uh, the existing second story area where the roof, or where the theater was contained would, uh, be increased to a, a two level, uh, residential unit, two floors of residential units. Each unit would be two floors, having their own stair. And then, um, the exterior penetration would be updated and would be compatible with building style. Um, and I did note in the staff report, and I'll note it here, that the roof access elevator does exceed the 35 foot height limit in the specific plan, but this is allowed by the city code, and there is a link to that section of the code in the staff report. Um, and I'll just quickly go through a couple of photos of the building. So it is, has been vacant for the last few years since COVID began. Um, there were a, a pair of, of clothing, you know, clothing resale shops at the, at first floor. And I, as I mentioned, the Paper Wing Theater, which did, uh, live shows, uh, usually at night uh, at the upper level. Um, here's the side elevation from Hoffman Avenue. That's the, um, main entrance to where the theater was, and that would be the entrance to the, the residential units, or at least to, to the main entrance for the residential uses. Um, and then here we see the rear and other side of the building. Um, and so here are the proposed elevations. As you can see, the applicant is proposing that third story with new windows. Um, all of the windows at the second story would be replaced and the storefronts would also be replaced. Um, I should note that this building is on our, the city's record and survey list. Um, it was identified as requiring additional research before determining whether it would be eligible. Uh, in the case of this project, the applicant had hired his grand to design the project to be consistent with the secretary standards, which is what our code requires for changes to buildings on this list. Um, and then, as you'll also note, that new roof access is proposed, uh, above the third story. Uh, and you'll, you'll see a little bit more about that on the side elevation here. As I mentioned, the, uh, the ground floor level would be converted, uh, to also parking. And so you can see at the center of that, that proposed elevation on the top there, uh, there's a new garage door that is proposed. Um, the existing entryway for the residential space would be reworked. The, the stair basically goes, currently goes all the way to the sidewalk. Uh, it would be removed and they would really rework that whole entry. Um, at the rear elevation, they would replace, uh, basically redo that whole elevation. Um, I think a lot of those windows, windows were not really identified as, as having much value. So they, they're replacing windows with something that's similar to the style of existing and, and proposed new use. Um, the applicant provided a couple of different renderings. So I've, uh, got two 3D renderings here. Kind of shows the scale of the building, that the overall building is, is not going to change in scale except for that roof access. Um, and then here's the other side of it. Uh, and then they've also shown these photo realistic renderings that, that kind of show it in the scale of the photo on the left here. Um, and I'll quickly go through the floor plan. So, um, as I mentioned, the ground floor would be converted into really mostly parking. And, um, there's also a, a waste storage area, electrical and mechanical rooms, a couple of storage spaces, bicycle parking. Uh, and then that, that retail tenant space would be consolidated into one space. Get out on the left. Um, this is the second floor. So, um, if you're able to see my mouse, you can see where that entryway is. That would be reworked into a, a new stair um, to access the first floor of each unit. Uh, so as I mentioned, each unit's going to have their own two story component. And then there's also this fifth unit on the, the far side. It's a bit, a bit smaller, you know, the, generally the range of these units are anywhere from, I, I believe it, it's outlined more in the staff report. Um, you know, around 1700 to 2400, uh, square feet. Um, and, and I think the goal here for the developer is to have units that, um, are A, of course, close to the downtown area, but that could, could also be, um, you know, used by a family. Um, they have a number of, you know, two to three bedrooms. Um, they do show three bathrooms, which they will need to have a water permit for that. But from what I've seen, they do have the water as well. Um, and here's that third floor. Again, um, these are really high end units. Um, and then here's the, the roof plan showing stair and elevator access to the roof deck. Um, so as I mentioned, the, the elevator, uh, and, and roof, uh, access stair do exceed that height limit. There's a section of the code that allows, uh, these types of things to be exempt from the height limit up to 20 feet and beyond 20 feet are required to use permit. That, that's not a requirement for this permit. Um, they don't need findings to exceed 20 feet here. Um, but a portion of their deck railing does exceed 35 feet. So staff has a condition that, that this portion be removed um, as part of their final design. Um, they did make a request, uh, under the lighthouse specific plan. And the plan allows the ARC to make exceptions for ADA or staff. Uh, and the building department looked at this and didn't find that there could be a reasonable exception to allow this, the deck to be, uh, exceed the height limit under the ADA. Um, so staff is recommending that it be revised. Uh, so in order to approve the product, the planning commission has to make three findings for, uh, use permit applications. The first thing that the proposed use is in accord with objectives of this chapter being the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone, which is, in this case, the planned community lighthouse district. Um, so the general plan does allow 30 units per acre, uh, or does allow projects to exceed 30 units per acre if it is allowed by a specific plan. The specific plan does allow this by use permit uh, with the finding for exceptional design uh, and that it implements the vision of the plan and the design objectives of the plan. Uh, the roof access is exempt. Um, and then also add there's, uh, uh, as I mentioned, the condition to remove that deck railing. And then, um, the plan actually does say that no additional parking is required to win an existing building changes, uh, use or intensifies their use. Um, this proposal includes parking in excess of what's required. The next finding is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare or persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. Um, so again, staff has found that this product is consistent with the, uh, general plan land use, which does allow this, uh, to, to exceed 30 units per acre density. Um, staff's made this finding that the project is of exceptional design. It will require design review by the ARC. Um, and I will go into the other, uh, uh, objective, design objectives as well. Um, and staff also found that the project is consistent with the secretary standards and compatible with the modern style. Um, there is a historian's report that is attached to the resolution as an exhibit. Um, the project includes a new parking, waste storage, which are also standards and, and guidelines within the, within the specific plan. These are things that are, are typically required. And so they've, they've met some of those requirements. Um, the roof deck is set back from the building's edge, which will limit privacy concerns and use into neighboring properties. And the deck railing will not exceed 35. Um, and third finding is that the produce will comply with any specific condition required for that use. So staff has required these two conditions. I've already mentioned the deck railing. Um, and then the other condition, uh, the, the applicant didn't include, um, their final uh, architectural review, design elements such as color lighting. I think the color really won't change much from what's shown here, but lighting, signage and other lines landscaping items were not included. Um, so we're asking that, uh, a condition that they'll provide this, and it would be required for final architectural review or sign permitting. Um, and then the fourth finding, it's not a use permit finding per se, but it's required by the specific plan. The product, uh, in order to exceed 30 units per acre must be exceptional in design, implements the plan vision and design objective, objectives. Um, I've already stated nearly all of this. Um, you know, some of the plan, uh, the plan, the vision elements are that we have a transit oriented mixed use development area on a commercial corridor. Uh, and this project includes a high quality housing and commercial development. Uh, and staff finds it to be exceptional in design. Um, and then there were a number of. design objectives that, again, we've listed in the staff report and provided responses to. I wanted to name a couple. Objective 2.1, commercial spaces are oriented for the pedestrian. There's no real change here. The commercial space is oriented towards Lighthouse Avenue. And then, you know, probably one of the more important ones is the design is sensitive to existing neighboring residences in the new Monterey neighborhood in terms of protecting views and privacy. You know, this project includes windows that are oriented towards lighthouse and Hoffman avenues. The windows at the rear are oriented towards an existing church, which actually exceeds the height of the project. I walked up Hoffman Avenue and, you know, felt that you know, there are some apartment buildings that will be able to see the new roof access. But as far as I could tell, they also have kind of sweeping views of the bay. And I did not really receive any comments, at least about the views. At least one person asked about the project, but did not write any comments. And another just asked about the number of bathrooms. So it did not appear that there would be any sort of significant issue with the viewer privacy. But I think that's something that the ARC will also look at as well. So again, staff's recommendation is to approve the project with conditions. I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant and project architect are on the call as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Let's start with questions for Chris first, commissioners.
Chris, can you minimize your slides just so we can see the other two commissioners?
There we go.
If there aren't any questions, I just wanted to make a couple additions. Story poles were installed so that the rooftop elevator area has been state. Also, I think it's clear, but just to specify just very clearly, the staff recommendation is that the deck railing be pulled back from Lighthouse Avenue so that it doesn't exceed 35 feet in height because we can't make the ADA finding.
But we're not here to decide that. We're just for the use permit, right?
Well, the condition of approval, so it didn't require a variance, is that it be pulled back from the street.
Okay. Perhaps we could hear from the applicant.
Green lights on. This one, not that one. Good evening, commissioners and staff. I first wanted to share my sincere appreciation of our staff support in collaboration with our development of this project, in particular, Chris first spit and Kim Cole. We've approached this from a collaborative effort, talking with staff and city even before lifting contingencies on the building to see this come to fruition. My name's Ethan Hare of Hare Construction, born and raised locally, son of two educators. Actually grew up in the church immediately behind this property, sitting on the wall, looking at this building for many years. We're very excited to participate in the reinvigoration of the lighthouse corridor. I mean, both this building and a number of others are pretty shabby and could a little overdue for love, in my own opinion. We've had some challenges with this building in our process. It's taken us longer and more time and energy than we didn't originally anticipated. And that, I understand, comes with the territory. A few disappointments along or discouraging things along the way as we've had multiple break-ins. But as this building is sat vacant, we've had plywood ripped off, windows smashed, leaving broken glass on the sidewalk below and homeless setting up camp using the bathroom everywhere except for the working bathroom. We look forward to participating and bringing additional housing units, potentially providing these units that'll be able to be applied to the arena requirements. And as Chris has stated, Christopher Schmidt has stated, we've taken our time to work with WRD, a local and talented architecture firm, and other very talented historians, including Ms. Bruno, to work within the Secretary of Interiors standards. This building has been identified as potentially historic, but not been identified as historic. Every historian we've hired and we've worked with several to make sure that doing the right thing has advised, has advised us to go through the process to remove it from the list. To be frank, we are not interested in going through the brain damage and very potentials of that process. So we really thought we could bring this building back to life and usher it into its new chapter. The one thing I would just offer as a respectful disagreement to what the staff's comment is of no fiscal impact. I'm a local resident builder, grew up in the trades. And when we are committing millions of dollars of risk and investment to these projects, it's bringing local dollars to our labor, our trades, our suppliers, and not only to, and at least, not least of all, to our property tax basis, both during our improvements and as we look to make these units available for purchase, including the commercial unit. So we think it could be really great for a small business owner to have the opportunity to own their own space and not just be. We're eager to move forward. We have submitted our application to be at the next potential available ARC meeting relative to the railings. I would offer that the building is 34 feet tall, straight up off property lines. The existing guardrails on the roof are set back about 12 feet from the edge and will not be visible from anywhere directly above the building. I would also offer that we are happy to work through those types of issues or concerns with the ARC as there could be some other alternatives to bring something down lower below the maximum heights limit that would also conform with what we could achieve, accomplish with the ARC. We're here to collaborate with the city. This is our first development project here in the city limits, and we're excited to ask for your support and approval this evening. Without approval this evening, we're on the heels of the holidays and end of year and at risk of time, unfortunately, we don't have. I've made myself architect and some of our team available for your, any questions or clarifications?
Questions from commissioners for Ethan? Mikes, any questions? So maybe, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Like we have someone, yes?
There is a hand raised. We'll take that after.
Take that one next.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Bill Bloom. I'm a partner in the project at 601 Lighthouse. And we're very excited about the project to get it moving along. We've done a lot of work to try and make it a really good project. A lot of thought and time and effort went into it. Staff's done a great job in working with us on this. And we hope to make this the shining star of the lighthouse corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer, next online.
Here we do have Christopher Barlow with the hand raised online.
Christopher's the architect, correct?
That's correct. Yes, Christopher Barlow, Architect of Record. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I was actually gonna go as part of the proponent talk, but I'm also a member of the public living in the city of Monterey. As Architect of Record, want to thank city and staff for being, you know, great partners in moving this project forward. Also want to just point out that this project is really a great first off, hopefully a lot easier of a use permit than the previous one you guys just went through. So my hat's off to you guys for getting through the wireless. But this one, we're really just looking at getting five units in here. As some of you may recall, a prior project on this property was proposed previously with four units that didn't quite pencil out. So this one actually just adds a fifth unit, which I think is good from a density standpoint. This is kind of, to me, a poster child of adaptive reuse project that really fits in exactly with the objectives of the lighthouse specific plan in the sense of the mixed use and the really quite what I really like about this design is that we've managed to fit the extra density within an existing building envelope. You know, as the owner Ethan mentioned, I think we can definitely work out any issues with railings being in the height limit. But I think in general, just the fact that we're able to fit these units in within the existing building envelope is really kind of a credit to the project. So I'm excited to move this forward and I hope the planning commission shares that excitement. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Anyone else? Any further hands raised or anyone from the audience?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay, so we'll just bring it back to commissioners and close the public testimony. We'd like to start easy one.
Here, I have a question of Chris.
For Christopher?
Yeah. Chris, in the design, first of all, let me say after reading all the cell stuff, I was very glad to read this project. And I'm looking at the design. I love the square footage of the apartment. I love the design. I love the rehab of the building and very appreciative of the parking that is impacting the city of Monterey. I did have one question regarding access to the top floor, to the ground. It used to be that anything over two stories that had only one stairway had a fire escape. I don't, I don't know what the city's requirements are now, but that's always a concern when you're on the third story and there's a fire in the first story.
Yeah, I could take that. We have two requirements, actually. One reason why we had to add windows at that third level is for the basic residential egress codes that we have to meet. You know, in the, you know, God forbid, there is an incident that we need to get the ladder, you know, the fire ladder up there. But we are allowed to have an independent stairway for each of the units. But I would point out that in addition to the windows, we also will have an internal corridor that's actually on the, it's going to be a two-level, basically an internal hallway, which will perform two functions aesthetically. It'll actually create a really beautiful light well into the back, the inner core of the building. But as an egress element, it'll also allow a second means of egress besides the main, you know, the main entry point off of you know, Hoffman Street. So that's, that's the design that we've developed. And I think, given the type and use, it's pretty typical for this type of, you know, multi-unit construction.
Thank you. Answered my question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, deliberation? Motion?
I just want to say that I want to say maybe a week before the planning commission meeting where we approved adapting the lighthouse specific plan to increased residential use. I had the pleasure of walking with Sharon Dwight and Brenda from the Coast Guard station to David, and we identified multiple places where we could do adaptive reuse into residential, and this was the number one spot. And there was parking behind. The building was already built. It just seemed ideal. And I love this project. I hope that it goes up quickly.
Well, I would have to agree. This is lots of check marks on this one. You know, residential mixed use on a transit corridor, parking provided so that it's not impacting the upper neighborhood. This is just, this is easy. This is a slam dunk in my mind. Commissioner Millet, comments?
I defer to your expertise in the area. But I agree with what you've said.
Commissioner Mikes? Any comments?
I'm okay. Thanks.
Okay.
I just agree with Sandy. I really love the design of the school.
So there's so much left for this. Yeah, let's have a motion.
Yeah. I move to approve 601 Lighthouse Avenue use permit application, UP 220115, to allow residential density to exceed 30 units per acre for a building conversion to a mixed-use building with five residential units with one condition that we eliminate the portion of the deck railing over 35 feet in height. Is that right, Jim? Yeah, okay.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second here. Further discussion? Real call vote, please.
Sheriff Fletcher?
Yes.
Vice Chief Millet?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latessa is absent. This motion carries with the vote of five, and it is appealable to the city council with forms found at the planning commission, I mean, planning office within the next 10 days.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to Commissioner comments. Anything from commissioners to staff or?
Since nobody else, let's go ahead and start. Kim, when we strike these.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
When we have these hearing, a substantial number of the cell tower issues from 6409 came. And would it be possible just to include the 6409 in the title? That's not going to stop me from reading them, but that would set my mind a little bit at ease.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
I'll say with with one potential caveat, the one thing I'm a little bit concerned about is sometimes we disagree with the applicant on whether or not it is a 6409 application. So if that occurs, if there's a legal reason, I may something differently.
Yeah, I understand. The second one is, what's the status on the vacancy?
On what?
I didn't. The position, commissioner, who fell?
Oh, you mean the planning commission vacancy? I don't know. That's at the city council level in their process.
I haven't seen any advertising.
Oh, they advertised and there were applications. Well, clearly, this current council isn't going to make that decision. So we'll have a election on November 8th. We, on the November 1st is our last, we'll call normal council meeting. November 15th, we'll be down to three council members. And then on I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the date. I think it's December 6th, the first meeting. The new mayor will be seated. And at some point in here, because both council member, well, council member Albert will lose his seat because he ran for mayor. So he'll either become mayor or council member Williamson will become mayor. So he'll either become mayor or council member Williamson will become mayor. But they will have to appoint a new council person to replace Dan Albert. If he loses the mayoral seat, then he doesn't drop back to his council position per our charter.
Really?
So we will have the, the new or a city council. I don't know when it's gonna happen. They have so many days within the date of the election to appoint the new person.
So the person who takes Dan Albert's seat. Would that be for two years, four years?
So this is where I, you know, honestly, this is at the city manager's level a little bit. I, I know a little bit enough to be dangerous. So I know enough as I'm looking forward to quorums and different things on council and I'm thinking of planning commission items. So we'll have four council members being seated, most likely the first meeting in December. Two new council members and the mayor, whoever that is. And then the empty seat will be seated at some point here. So at the staff level, we're looking at a full council by the second meeting in January. So
Are we gonna have a meeting that's usually before Thanksgiving?
I'll be gone.
November twenty, was it twenty second?
The twenty second. I can look at canceling it right now. Maybe this is a good signal.
I, I can tell you, I'm, I'm gonna be working in San Francisco that afternoon. I doubt if I'll be back in time for a four o'clock meeting.
Okay. Well, that may solve things for us. Are you ready for my comments or have we finished with commission comments?
I think so.
I would like to make one more comment. I appreciate what staff has done for this meeting up to including and some of the statements made by I didn't appreciate the casting of sprudence against your selection of counsel.
Yeah.
And I, I want to say thank you for the counsel. I, I really weigh it when representatives you give us, tell us things and I, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make sure to share that. Thank you.
I appreciate what you've done on the reports, the legal part of it. It was it was, it was purpose. There's nothing wrong with the advice that you gave. The decision was to be made, not on the advice. We had, I had all the advice. We had all the advice we need. Okay, that was good advice. But sometimes it is.
Yeah, I also think if Christie was sitting there, she would tell us that this is a closed item.
In any event, thank you for the work you did in projection.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thumbs up.
Thank you. As we round out the year, staff is going to be pushing hard on two additional items. I don't know whether they'll get adopted before the end of the year, but I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna try. At our next meeting on October twenty fifth, we're bringing forth amendments to the downtown and lighthouse specific plan. The major focus of those are creating what's objective design standards to comply with Senate Bill thirty five. Tell you a lot more about it. And then we're doing some cleanup too.
Isn't today October twenty fifth?
I'm sorry, November eighth.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Just for November eighth today. I got my dates wrong.
I've been waiting for you, Mike.
And Senate Bill thirty five is one of the housing streamline, housing streamlining bills. So you'll get a good orientation to that. The second item, the governor just signed additional amendments to accessory dwelling unit law that become effective January first. We are rushing to put together the minimum necessary to comply with this governor's new law.
When did it be signed?
When?
When was this signed?
Two weeks ago. And some things are like increasing the height of ADUs. New ADUs will be allowed to be, I believe it is twenty five feet if they're attached to the existing house or multifamily structure.
Did he consult any of you before he signed it?
There will also be four or five issues that the council actually has been thinking about for a while for ADUs that they'd like you to think about. You may see us try to really push through the, the edits we need to be in compliance January first and then I don't know. Well, we're gonna try to, we'll present both to you, but we're going to try to be compliant with the law of January first, although that's difficult when the bill was just passed. So we'll do the best we can.
Okay. Does that actually require building of units or the zoning for building of years?
It just requires us for accessory dwelling units, just requires us to amend our code to allow certain size ADUs. They're just getting bigger. Getting bigger.
Four to two units per.
Nope, but so we will be trying to work on getting those two housing laws through at council in sometime late January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also for keeping your head and your focus on the ordinance and moving it forward while a general pool of people were still in one place with thoughts and not moving forward. Difficult.
Yeah, thank you so much for
She's sitting there.
Really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Take care.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.